Welcome, I'm Jim Gable and as you all know, and I'm here to give you a briefing on the Lincoln Manor Incorporated, the Lincoln Park Manor Nursing Home. I'm gonna sit down and do it. If everybody can see this, alright? We'll go straight through. If you have questions as we go, you can ask them. I'm gonna have two other people make a couple of presentations in the middle of it, and then we'll have whatever time you want at the end of it to discuss and ask and carry on, alright? Why are we here? A little bit of the history of the nursing home, and it's kinda hard to read back in the back, but if you wanna move up, you can. Plenty of room in the jury box. There's nothing new. This all was reaped last fall to at least three different places in the county. It's of concern because a third of the county in 2025 is gonna be 65 or older. This is a little... has some other little caveats in it. If your mother is 90 or 95, and as life expectancy continues to increase and look better, how old are the kids? They're seven. They're probably not in a position to take care of their parents anymore. So we're looking at more people coming into the nursing home, and indeed you may have two generations. We have some two-generation families over there now. We feel the nursing home is a critical importance to the county. Fourth largest employer. We use a lot of local vendors. As a matter of interest, Patterson Pharmacy, he told me that 11% of his business is with the nursing home. The hospital medical staff, $400,000 financial effect. Lincoln Park Manor, the people that work there have 32 students enrolled in the school. And when I mentioned this to the superintendent, she asked that Mr. Brenneman could make a couple remarks. So I'd like mine, and he come up and make his remarks at this time, please.
Thanks, Jim. Just for those who don't know, I'm John Brenneman, the president of the Lincoln School Board. Jim makes the comment up there that if those 32 students would happen to go somewhere else, what that impact would be. 32 students to the USD 298 would be approximately 10% of our student enrollment. If all 32 attended Lincoln and those 32 went somewhere else. That would be approximately $128,000 in state funding that potentially be lost to the district. And how that would impact us would be in a variety of forms. If that total amount went to certified staff, the teachers, that'd be approximately three staff members that we would have to either find other means to pay them or would have to go elsewhere to work. How that would impact us if that amount went towards classified staff, being the parents, cooks, bus drivers, so on and so forth. You know, that could be upwards around 10 staff members. But it goes far beyond, you know, just the monetary impacts. It would be course offerings would reduce the number of kids. We wouldn't be able to offer the same amount of courses because we wouldn't be able to keep the numbers where they need to be to justify those kids in class. Athletic activities, extracurricular activities would be impacted, which they're already declining and we struggle to do that as we speak for a variety of reasons. But losing 10% of your student population would certainly impact that as well. So just wanted to kind of put an exclamation mark on the information Jim was presenting, you know, on behalf of our school district. And later on, if you have questions, I'm glad to answer those as well.
Thank you, sir. The last item talks about quality of life for Lincoln County residents. Let me expand that a little bit, Jim. We have a friend who had her mother in a nursing home in Salina. For one reason or another, she was not in Lincoln Park Manor. She was without a job, retired, so she could go down and visit her mother as she saw fit, every day, five times a week, whatever. But she down in Salina, and her car's low on gas. Does she drive back to Lincoln to fill it up? No. Does she do her shopping down there? Does she buy her clothes? Does she ever do her thing down there? Well, that's easy enough to understand that. But what if your mother was in Salina, and you had a job and you had to continue working? The first couple of months, you'd go down there as often as you could, two, three times a week, on the weekends. Pretty soon that would get old, and you'd be down there once on a weekend, and then once a month. And the first thing you know, you're feeling very guilty because you can't take up your mother as well as you should have. And what you in essence have done is warehouse her in Salina until she dies. We think we have a better option if we have a viable nursing home in Lincoln. We have three goals with the citizens. We want to serve the older citizens. We want to transfer ownership of the facility to the Lincoln Manor Incorporated, which is a private, local, one day will be nonprofit for governance. And we want to reduce the financial liability of the residents of the county and eventually get them out of the nursing home business. Motherhood may not survive so far. This is our goal number one, our turnaround plan of action. We're hiring a marketing person. On the first of May, we had five candidates, and I believe we narrowed that down, and they're seriously getting ready to hire somebody. We're gradually increasing the census of our assisted living and nursing facility and so forth. We need a new EMR, that's electronic medical recording software, to increase case mix. What case mix means is, as we report this, and if we're able to report this, we can improve the number of treatments that we have, therefore we'll get more money from the federal government or who's providing the funds. So by, excuse me, spending $18,000 for that EMR, we can probably improve our situation significantly. And we'll talk more of this in a little bit. One of the things that we have on the turnaround plan of action, this is what's going on now, is home health. And I've had a couple people express interest in the home health situation, and I'll ask Mr. Grace to address that. You will, John?
Sure. Good morning, I'm John Grace. Our company owns Lincoln Park Manor. So when we took over the facility, May the 27th of last year, we spent a few months looking, digging into all of the programs and services to try to get a better understanding of all the costs and revenues and things. And at first glance, it appeared that the home health might have been making money. But as we dug into it, we found out that there was no allocation being made for like the administrative time to operate the program, utilities, the workers' comp, the mileage, all of that associated with it. So as we, as we got into it and then began to look at the real costs of operation, we found out that actually it's losing money. Now, we, we have a nonprofit that we work with called Sun Porch. And the nonprofit had agreed then to take over the home health program and try to expand it. And we're providing services up in Smith Center. And we think that growing the volume of the program, it might do a better job. So in 2015, it lost 53,000. In 2016, it was about to break even. And we estimate in 2017, it lost 23,000. So the program will continue, but the ownership will be with the nonprofit. So there will continue to be home health services provided in the county. Angel's Home Health also serves the county. And if the new nonprofit sees fit, that it wants to create a home health agency, we will help them do that. So home health will continue to be provided. And I'm happy to sit down with anyone to go over the financial information, if you like, just to give you a better explanation. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Goal two, let's transition to the nonprofit. We got numbers. Legal filings, IRS exemption, so forth. The county has budgeted $75,000 for repair and maintenance for this year. We want to purchase the nursing home. That's going to cost us $105,000. It's gonna cost more than that because John's got some stuff, he does some renovation he needs paid for. And in essence, John's gonna cost about $150,000 to go away. We will, in the process, pay key vendors, buy the new software for 18K and so forth. Long term, we need to increase the census in the nursing home by one person every other month, Medicare by two. And we're gonna talk about these things shortly. Goal three. We inform the new corporation, that's Lincoln Manor Incorporated. The business will be purchased from the current owners, John and the county. The county will transfer maintenance and repair funds to Lincoln Manor from funds already allocated. And you allocate $125,000 for the next three years for repair and maintenance.
Wait.
Yes, ma'am.
You said we've allocated $125,000?
In your budget.
For 2018?
19 and 20. No.
We haven't done 19 yet.
18 is up, 75. You have in your long range, in your planning, 75 for this year and 125 for the next three years.
In your planning?
Not in mine.
I haven't seen this plan.
This is our board, Lincoln Manor. I have Alan Serena, ex-official member, because he is a chairman of the advisory board, which does not vote on the board, but provides technical expertise as we need. We'll get back to your money here in a little bit.
Jim?
Yes.
Good question. There it says, you know, nonprofit, but you said not quite nonprofit yet. Which is it?
We don't own anything yet. Lincoln Park Manor is not nonprofit. We're in to get our nonprofit status from the IRS.
Okay, that's...
We have, we have the corporation, and Mr. Krangle can address that.
It is organized as a nonprofit corporation in Kansas. We haven't registered with the Internal Revenue Service yet to make it a 501(c)(3), which makes it exempt from federal income tax. But it is a nonprofit at this time.
So we're working. It takes a while to work your way through the paperwork. And all of the board are present here today. This is busy and it's hard to read. Up at the top, these are the months and the years, and then 18 and 19. This is our income, and this is our outgo. And this is the difference. Up until about September, these are the red. Here we go into the black. And we hope to finish the year more black than red, and next year will be a profit. Now, I've extracted a piece of this, so you can see it a little better. Our population is 30 in the nursing facility and 7 in the assisted living. We need that to grow. And if that grows by three people, two in the nursing and one in the assisted living, we turn black. And that's all it takes, three more people. And that's the reason we're looking for a marketing person. I say "we" because John's doing that. We'll take it over when we get there. That person, by adding one more person to our population, will pay her salary or his salary for the year. We intend to keep that increasing as best we can and subject to other things. Now, the assumption is that the nursing home is going to be needed. The population in Lincoln County is going to continue to increase. We're also looking at advantages of other things, such as the 28 nursing homes that the state of Kansas has taken over recently. One of them is not far away in Wilson. It would be an opportunity, we think, to go down and approach those people and see if they would like to move to Lincoln for whatever reason. So there's an opportunity to sell our nursing home to other places. There are a number of people who are Lincoln citizens that are outside Lincoln in nursing homes. We'd like to reverse that trend. This is another graph of our census. And you can see it's generally going straight up. And the income follows that very nicely, as you would expect. The more people paying, the more incomes.
But this is in the future. This isn't what happened in the past.
This is in the past.
This is a hypothetical version of the future.
Yes, it is. And we have to assume that we're going to have a population. We have to assume that there's going to be more people all the time that's going to need nursing home facilities. With that, that being an assumption, you're in trouble from the start. Our board has discussed this in some detail, and these are our conclusions. When you finish the construction that's going on now, which will be done mid-May, whatever timeframe it is, you'll have room for 36 skilled nursing, and that should be SNC. Yours, I think you got a mispronounced there. And nine long-term. The old part of Lincoln Park Manor, we don't think is viable in the long term. It's being fixed up, and we can use it in the temporary. But if you pick a number in the future, years, it's not gonna work. The electricity, electrical system is bad, the plumbing is bad. It doesn't meet WIT standards. There's a lot of things that's gonna go wrong. And we don't see it as being viable in the long term. That part has 15 people in it. The other part, the newer part, has 21. What we propose is, the old part is, there are several things. One option is to continue with this and freeze it in place and use the old part as it is till something happens. The second option we considered was rebuild the old part to bring it up to whatever standards we need, and that cost is gonna be somewhere over $2 million. Third option we looked at, and we, this was the option that was briefed last fall and generally agreed to, and we think it's the only viable, is abandon the old part, spend that same about $2 million, build two greenhouses. Now, the greenhouse, you recall, is a four, I'm sorry, a 12-person nursing home facility. We can build two of them, and we, excuse me, we think we can build just south of the present nursing home. Then we would have one of those greenhouses to be long-term, and we could convert the other one to skilled nursing. And the 21 people that live in the nursing home now, and the new part would be skilled nursing. This means the ally, Lincoln Park Manor Incorporated, has to purchase Lincoln Park Manor and build the two greenhouses. Yes, sir. If I remember right, these greenhouses cost $3 million a piece. About $2 million for two of them. We think we can get a better deal than that. I, there's a lot of design and value engineering you can do into that. You can certainly build a nice facility for about a million dollars, we think, here in Lincoln. And yes, you're right, the ones that were originally briefed last fall were considerably higher. But we believe you can do it less.
Can you go back to the slide that says goal one?
Yeah, one more.
One more.
Okay, good, second. I have another question before I go back.
You're talking about all this money. Are you yourself putting this money in? And who's putting all this money in?
Well, I gotta go back and ask the next slide. But you can't see that yet. She wanna see goal one. Goal one.
Pay, private pay rate increase affected March 1st. Had that already happened March 1st, or are you talking about next March 1st?
No, that's already happened. Oh, is that $10? I don't remember what it was, $10? All of them nursing, why not?
So... How much of this goal one has happened, then? If you're saying the middle, that middle line there has already happened?
Well, this is part of the transition. This is in the process of happening.
So what have, what have you checked off of that list?
Okay, we're getting ready to hire the market. We're trying to increase the census. We haven't done anything about money yet, because we're not in charge. Again, the private pay went up. This has already been done, the equivalent of two full-time employees has already done. They're maintaining the building. We're developing plans for the future. We need to buy that software. There is no health insurance package at this time plan.
For employees?
For employees. If and when we take over the nursing home, we intend to do that, to make it a more attractive opportunity for somebody to work for.
So I have a question. Okay, the two things that you can check off this list that are done.
Yep.
You've increased the pay rate per resident, and you've reduced the payroll hours. You've already implemented a reduction of the equivalent of two full-time employees. So how do you increase the census of those needing care when you've already reduced two employees staffing?
Because this is the number, it wasn't two employees that we lost, it's several full-time people, or part-time.
So I'm saying when you increase the need by increasing the census...
We will be adding more people. You'd have to add more, and it depends on what the administrator says she needs. If you expand, you gotta have more people. That's true. And just how many, how many people? One or two you could add, but if you do more than that... If you were in the greenhouse now, you have a different set of employees in the greenhouse. If you'll recall, they're a general employee. You don't have a whole bunch of specific. And so you'll probably go to the higher level of population without increasing the number of employees of the structure of the greenhouse the way it's operated.
So if we look at the chart with the budget and operational plan view that you've projected out into the future, the end of this year?
Okay.
As you increase your total revenue, that top line is yellow. I know you can't see back there, but there's a, there's an increase in revenue expected upon the increase in occupancy. But I don't see an increase in total expenses, so where are you accounting for the increase in staffing?
Right now, you have to ask John about that. Of course, we are not allowed to adjust these figures yet. You guys have to prove us to buy it before we can get involved.
But I'm saying these numbers reflect you increasing the census...
Population, that's right.
But it doesn't reflect the increase necessary in staffing that you just said would take place?
But we don't have to increase staffing yet. We haven't started on, this is still...
Those aren't labor expenses, license, those are...
This is still the current nursing home, the 36-seat nursing home we have now. This isn't greenhouse stuff. This is what we're doing right now.
So you're saying payroll's not included in this? Right, 'cause it only, we're only talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars. So where, how do we calculate? I have a net income number here, growing, growing, growing. How do we calculate net income without knowing the total cost of all our expenses, including payroll, which I would think would be of primary importance? Did I lose anyone?
No. No. It should reflect all the increased expenses for our operation.
But Kristen just said it doesn't.
Well, it should, yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Let me see here. I'm sorry. Total expenses is not fully payable on this? Pardon? I think 2.6 million for the whole year, so I think it probably does. So yeah, what we did, we tried to project out with an increasing census, what would be the increasing cost. This is what this is.
I'm just still confused, though, because I have an increase in total revenue happening, but I don't have an increase in expenses happening on that chart. Could you go back one, maybe?
You're increasing four residents if you're updating.
Yeah, so when it comes to, when it comes to like assisted living, if we go, I think we're at 5.5 now. So if we go from 5.5 to 8, we probably aren't gonna have a lot of increase in costs, other than maybe some food costs. We probably won't increase our staffing for assisted living, okay? So there really won't be that much increased cost there.
This says there is an increase in both skilled nursing and assisted living.
Yep, and so on the skilled nursing, I think we're at 29. And there always is a point where you need to add some more hours. So, you know, I don't know if that's 30 or 31 right now. That's kind of getting way down in the bowels of the operation. And I'd be glad to sit down with you and go over that. But the plan would be that we would keep an appropriate number of hours per resident per day, which is the requirement of the state. And also you need to have the number, you need to have a certain number of hours to provide quality care. So as we increase census, there'll come a point where we need to add another part-time person.
So I'm still confused because if Kristen is saying that this doesn't include payroll...
It does include, it doesn't include the home health, that's what's struggling me out. So the home health piece isn't added in here.
But there's no revenue nor expense for home health included in this chart? Home health is...
It's separate.
It's, it's not in?
Yeah.
Okay, so a semi-accurate estimate for the year is what it's saying, total expenses of $2,624,778. Is that similar to, this is a projection from the year that we haven't finished. Is that similar to the expenses that you incurred in 2017?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
So you actually have a deduction from total expenses in January from $219,000 by December down to $217,000. So I'm just confused about with this increase of census by three to four people here, at least. Well, two people, two and a half people in assisted living, and three, three to four people in skilled nursing. That's almost six, six-person census increase with a $1,000, $2,000 deduction in expenses.
Mm-hmm.
How does that, how does that mathematically make sense?
Well, during that time, actually, the, we have a loan that the kids pay off. That's about $2,000 a month. And so that's when that breaking point is on there, that's when that's coming in.
Okay, so there's still no accounting for the increase in expenses for adding six people to the facility?
Yes.
The increase in utilities?
There is, yes, there is. It's built in here.
She just said the $2,000 is because the loan is being paid off, which I understand, if you're gonna pay off the loan in the year, then...
That's fair. But here, in this $225,000, there are probably 50 line items in there. 50 different expenses. So I will sit down with you, and I will go through every one of those so that we can see. I think your concern is, are we gonna provide quality care? If we're gonna increase the census, are we gonna provide enough staff to meet their needs? And the answer is yes. Now, there, like I say, I'd be glad to sit down and go over that with you.
Okay, here we go. Windpower. We looked at the web fund, and this is what it says it was created for. And this is what it says that it can be used for, and we believe we meet the criteria. Created to support the interest, educational, social betterment, overall safety of the communities, nonprofits, and local county government. Preference is given to projects of a distinct need and that demonstrates a resourceful approach to address that need. And we think we have that created, and that's our option three.
Who, who provided the explanation of this Windpower Economic Benefits Fund? What it was created for?
I went into the document you guys published on what they did. Web fund grants by the LCEDF, business incentives.
So that's from the Web Fund Committee?
Uh, well, it's from Economic Development Post. Yes, ma'am.
Wasn't this Windpower money supposed to be used for, for taxes? Isn't that what it's all about, this pilot program?
I don't, I don't know how it was set up. All I have is just this document that says what it's used for. I don't know what agreements they reached early on.
May I interject here? The law used to be that...
The law used to be that, that type of money went to reduce taxes. The legislature and the, it was the one who reversed the rule, passed the law, the county commission now determines where money goes.
Is Kelly here, Kelly Washington?
Yep.
Oh, is this, this says web fund grants, and this says it was printed in two thousand fifteen, and it's the, he's using the wording as far as what the web money was for. Is this for the committee that spends the interest every year? That's what it looks like to me.
Um, that looks different, I don't know if it's been retired, but.
It says August fifth, two thousand fifteen, you were here, right?
Yes, I was.
Uh, I'm just wondering, is this the, this, it says application forms are available at the Economic Development Foundation, so wouldn't that be, this is referring to the.
So, yeah, it looks like that would be referring to.
The committee that spends the interest every year? Have we spent all of this years in two thousand eighteen? No, you're on that board, right? Okay, and I'll tell you what that is.
This is what we want. The whole four hundred and fifty thousand immediately, that's seventy-five from the current allocation and a hundred and twenty-five for the next three years. And we want you to obligate two million dollars more or less over the next three years to build the two greenhouses. Yes, ma'am?
So are you putting any of your money into this?
No.
So this is just gonna be what the taxpayers are gonna have to end up paying?
Well, yeah, it's the web fund, yes, exactly.
You're not gonna use any taxpayer money?
Well, I don't know, this is taxpayer money here, and this is taxpayer money here, and this is web money. You can argue that it's all taxpayer money, but it would go into the budget. So there's no, no private funding going in here, it's all coming out of here.
I have a question. Oh, someone's gonna ask, I have a question for Terry. So if they took the two million dollars out of the web fund, would that decrease the interest loans, like the interest grants that you guys do every year for different organizations? Would that decrease that amount that you're giving out to other groups?
Sure, I'm saying.
Although, I qualify that there is still money coming in. So the two million wouldn't come out of, there won't be two million in the next three years coming in. Yes, it will decrease the amount of money there.
How long will it take to replenish it?
Well, let me find my paper. Okay, I can get it, I think, pretty close.
Um, my question, you, the seventy-five thousand from current allocation for maintenance and repairs, that's from two thousand eighteen budget? Because the remainder of that that we budgeted has already been spent this year?
Well, you have, you've obligated the three hundred thousand to fix that up. That's what you're doing now. But the seventy-five thousand is for the rest of the year. Once your project is complete over there, this does repair and maintenance for the rest of twenty eighteen.
Don, what was our line item out of the general fund for the nursing home for eighteen? A hundred and, I'm saying, when we approved the budget for this year, it was one hundred and twenty, I believe, one hundred and twenty thousand. So you're saying that seventy-five that you're asking for in a lump sum.
Is part of that hundred and twenty thousand.
So is that the amount that we've spent? I'm not, forty-five thousand this year so far?
I think I got that from.
That's just what I'm wondering, okay, so you're asking.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm gonna be doing.
So if we were to, just hypothetically, for this year, give you the rest of that hundred and twenty thousand that we've lined up and budgeted.
Which would be about seventy-five.
Does that mean that no more bills for the year two thousand eighteen will be turned in to the county?
It depends if we get the other things here. It's a, it's a package thing, you have to approve the nonprofit buying the thing, and then you have to fund it. And we say that the initial four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, purchase it and get rid of John and get you out of the business, will come out of the stuff that you have allocated or will activate for the next three years for repair and maintenance.
So if you were to hypothetically get the lump sum of money that you're requesting right here on this page, which is.
Just four fifty, plus two million.
Two million, four hundred and fifty thousand.
That's right.
If you get two, if you get two million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, are you buying the building and the business?
Lock stock and mortem, and build two greenhouses in the next five years.
What are you paying for the building?
For your building? That was one of the slides back there in the front.
Oh, that was.
Katie?
Yes.
In two thousand seventeen, in two thousand seventeen, there was approximately six point two million dollars in there, but we do have an expense for the nursing home of four hundred thousand or something like that, I'm not sure what it's gonna be. But somewhere between a little less than a half million, five hundred thousand. In two thousand eighteen, we are projected to collect four hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, which is about four hundred and fourteen thousand. But, in two thousand eighteen, of that, almost ninety-six, almost ninety-six thousand will be directed to the school systems in two ninety-eight, two ninety-nine. So, you're talking about a hundred, or three hundred and fifteen thousand comes in, is that right?
That spreadsheet already has the school out of it.
This one does?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's, I should have, no, that would.
Okay, so we get about four hundred and thirteen thousand every year. So, in three years, that means we give one point two million, an additional money.
So it'll take about six years to replenish that, that two million dollars.
Actually, from two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-seven, which is ten years, we are collecting another three million dollars.
Could potentially be more if Post Rock.
Yes.
Extension for the Post Rock one comes back.
Post Rock, Post Rock believes us in two thousand twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-one is the last payment for Post Rock. If they do not choose to renegotiate or to pay pilot fees, we won't get anything. These are all dependent on those wind farms paying. We are under contract with Smoky Hills Phase One and Two until two thousand twenty-seven. But, uh, one, the other, there's another hiccup in here. If the state of Kansas decides to start taxing them, then this money all goes away. That was one of the problems we had when we started using this directly to finance the county budget, was what would happen to all, to us if all that money suddenly evaporated? In other words, if, right now we're hitting around five hundred and a half million, six hundred thousand dollars. If, if those would be taxed, that year that would immediately go away. How was the county gonna make up six hundred thousand dollars? That was the plundering we were with, and that's one of the reasons we set this up. Is because we didn't wanna be dependent on this money, because it is not a dependable source. So that's why we set it up this way to use. Now, this is my, this was my opinion, after we set it up, when we got to around five million, I said, hey, we've probably pigeonholed enough of that money. We need to start doing some things in this county that need to be done. One was the nursing home. Another project that we've looked at this spring is the front of the courthouse, those steps coming in the courthouse need repaired pretty badly. And that's probably gonna be fairly expensive, since it's a historical building. But, that's why, I guess, that's why we have this money here. And, this one was not a project that we saw coming down the pipe, but it's suddenly facing this. That's kind of my explanation. You know, I, I feel that we are, probably have benefited from this plan, even though I was not really in favor to start with. But I, I now see that it maybe was a smart thing for us to do. And several counties have tried to follow this to, over the years, and have envied that Lincoln County set this up.
Could you both go back to the slide, someone said there was a slide that said what you're paying for the building?
Purchase, right there. But then that purchase price is also over there.
Purchased nursing home business and current loans, isn't that the payment to Mr. Grace?
Yeah, yeah.
So where's the payment for the building, someone said it was on there?
That's all in here. And this is our working gas bill.
How, what?
This is to pay the county receivable.
So of the, of the line where it says a hundred and five thousand, purchased nursing home business and current loan, what's the split on that dollar amount between buying the business and buying the building?
As I recall, the board was asking for one of two options. County turn over the building to the nonprofit. The second option is a long-term lease to the nonprofit.
So in this proposal, it's two million, four hundred and fifty thousand plus the building?
That's correct.
Not entirely. This four twelve five is thirty-eight thousand short, and that thirty-eight thousand would be purchased the building. If that's not enough, then we need to negotiate. Remember, we're asking for four fifty.
Is this an all or nothing deal?
Pretty much. We just, we could, John can address what happens if we don't do anything.
Well, my only. Hey Jim, I think the nonprofit, that's what I did. And I'm not beyond doing something on the building that gets us out of the maintenance. I don't know how the three of us can offer me two million dollars over the next three years. None of us may be through that. We could say, sure, we'll do that, and the next three people coming in the building say, no, we're not gonna do it. So, I don't, I'm not sure how it could be done, but where we, the three of us, can guarantee two million dollars. And, to do two million dollars in advance of a project, probably. Uh, I don't see how that could possibly happen either.
Well, we didn't ask to advance, it's over three years that we build and obligated, as we go, we didn't want, didn't expect a two million dollar check to be sent. It could be fed in, but your issue is still the same, if the state takes the money away, then what are you gonna do?
I guess I would say that, that I think this is a good idea. However, I'm a little hesitant, like Terry, with the two million out for three years. I guess, probably in favor of you taking over the facility, the nonprofit, and seeing what develops. I would hate to commit to building something unless, until I see that this nonprofit can function and run the nursing home. I, I think, you know, whether it's one or two years, I don't know, but I think just to immediately jump into this, I, I'm a little hesitant of that. Do I think that nursing home is in trouble? Yes, I do. I've contacted several nursing homes, and there is a crisis there. And how we're gonna meet that crisis, I think, is, it'll face everybody then. And this county is in a position, I think, that we can do something now. But I, I'm with Terry, I, I would, I would not, I think at this time today anyway, commit two million dollars to, over three years, to building things.
Now, with the five oh one two three status, um, if you guys bought the building, would you be eligible for renovation grants? Have you, have you done any research into that, have you?
No, and we can't until we get a decision, one way or the other, to proceed with our thing. Right now, it's a what-if.
Right, now, here's my what-if, what if you guys just bought the building standing as is? And then, you know, you become the owners, and you business, all that stuff, as is? Then would you look into, rather than depleting uh, web fund monies, would you be able to look into renovation grants, for grants that would help sustain the nursing home?
Well, the nursing home, when you finish your three hundred thousand dollar construction that's going on now, is gonna be suitable for the thirty-six people living and the nine over in the assisted living. But it will not have room to expand, and you haven't improved your situation at all. The old part of that building, at some future time, next year, five years from now, is no longer gonna be standards. Uh, it's pretty hasty right now that we're, with the electrical plumbing and the facility itself is not good. The money that you put into it now is a stopgap thing to keep it going and to get out from under that umbrella that we had from the inspection a year or so ago. If you gave us the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the truth is, we could buy the nursing home, and it would be available for the last of the thirty-six and for the nine in the assisted living. But it has no room to expand, and in a couple of years, it's gonna be, uh, not satisfactory as far as the inspectors are gonna concern. And then you're in the same dilemma. So we're gonna have to fix it sometime, it's just a matter of when you wanna fix it.
How many residents are in each greenhouse?
Each greenhouse holds twelve.
So that's twenty-four, and your other one holds thirty-six?
We hold twenty-one, because we can get rid of the old part. So that'll give us, uh, thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
I mean forty-five, I can't add, yes, ma'am.
Well, as I look at this, everybody may be thinking that I won't know what I'm talking about. But here's what you need to do. The people that are in favor of this nonprofit status, if you each put in ten thousand dollars or more, take fifty of it, you'd have the five hundred thousand. Now whether you pay that or pay that back to these people, or whether it's just a gift or a loan, it got you started, and you can apply for grants, and the county would be out of it, be off the tax rolls. And I think that's the way to make the people in the county the happiest, you would continue on. You could give, uh, grants, loans to expand and build the greenhouses, but you would not be expecting the county to put taxpayer money right into it. Would that not work?
Yeah, yeah.
You got ten thousand, you wanna start again tonight, today?
I got ten thousand dollars, you think I'd be living in winter? I'd be in the south of France.
Well, put in twenty then. Fifty.
You're not gonna find that kind of money.
Well, you know, we got a problem of taxation in Lincoln County now.
It's gonna get worse too.
The mill levies.
But there's another way to look at it. That's four years for the maintenance, that we're gonna stand on that building that we're gonna have anymore. And that maintenance, if we own that building, is gonna go on forever.
Well.
And that gets you out from under about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, if you give them a bill.
I just say give it to them, they're gonna buy it for you as an example up there.
Well, I mean, if we get out from under it.
Just put up four hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand, you got it going.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, you were saying on that one slide about how you were gonna get somebody every month in there, now, is it full right now?
No.
Okay, so if you don't have it full now, how are you gonna get anybody to come? Plus, why did the people that take their, their parents to Salina or somewhere else, why did they go there instead of coming to Lincoln, if you already have openings?
I cannot answer that, but the, why we think we can grow it, because we are hiring and marketing persons to go out and sell the nursing home. We have not done that in the past. So we're going to have some aggressive sales going on to try to increase that census. There are open two rooms through the construction process.
Jim, how are you gonna account for the fact that if you don't have health insurance, health home insurance, rest home insurance, or pay the bill on your own, that aren't gonna take you up there, that's a Medicare issue? You know, there are about six, nine months out, but I heard Dad went in there, that won't pay you up until then, who's gonna need to bill that?
I, I mean, uh, are you asking whether we wanna have health insurance for the employees?
No, 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 no. You cannot get in that place unless you've got rest home insurance or you can put the bill by yourself.
That's true.
Medicare will not pay out. It takes you, what, six, nine months before you get eligible for Medicare?
Medicaid.
Medicaid. So how are you going to get around that?
The governor supposedly has issued orders in Topeka to fix that. And he has made some pretty sharp teeth into the folks that are sending that out. Yet hopefully, we've got to leave the governor to get that solved so that you get paid sixty days instead of a year. That wasn't heard early here a while back. Yes, sir.
So when you do, if you do get these greenhouses, are you paying, are you going to pay the health, health insurance? Are they going to give the whole meal deal?
Yes.
And are your wages going to be comparable to other counties? Because you're not going to have nurses, as a nurse. You're not going to have a nurse if you're not comparable to surrounding areas.
That's our intent, yes.
She's talking about greenhouse employees who aren't just solely, you know, some...
When I looked into, one time he was advertising for a DON, but he wasn't going to pay health insurance or anything else. And the wage was way lower even without, I mean, without health insurance. I would not take that without health insurance and a wage so low. When I was looking at it here recently, or about a couple of months ago.
Health insurance is one of the things that we have listed on our, what we're going to do.
But my concern is the projected expenses don't go up to compensate for your projected health insurance.
Not in that year, because we didn't include.
But the gap, the, the potential, in, the potential net profit of fifty-five thousand dollars, maybe for the year, if things perfectly, then that doesn't allow, if going into the next year, that's not nearly enough to cover increased staffing, health insurance for all the full-time employees.
But someone mentioned about grants and donations. Most nonprofits go after that. So that would have to be part of the plan with the nonprofit.
Like you just said, that nobody in the county has the money. But yet you're expecting everybody to give you donations? I mean, we're in a farming community. I don't know if any of you people in town realize it. But right now, the farming business is at its low. I mean, the cattle are low, the price of grain is low. So where do you expect the people from the country to come up with all this money?
Well, what we're going to use for the four hundred fifty thousand dollars is the, we're moving the tax from the repair and maintenance of the facility into purchasing the facility. So that money is going to be spent one way or the other. Are you fixing it up on the county's ticket or fixing it up on our ticket?
But what about all the money that we've already spent on? I mean, when you're talking about buying this building, look at all the money we've already invested in it. Are you going to give us back all that money plus?
No.
The proposal is four, two million four hundred fifty thousand dollars plus whatever the building's worth. Do we have an appraisal on it?
We have nothing like that. Till we get a, go ahead, we can't do any of that stuff. Yes, sir.
I would just point out on purchase price of a building, if, if they're going to be funded out of taxpayer dollars, why are we worried about what they're going to pay for the building if you're just going to give them the money to pay again? You know what I'm saying?
No, I didn't follow you.
They're, they're getting the money from taxpayer funds to buy a taxpayer-owned building. Why do you care what they're paying for the building if you're going to give them the money to buy it from you? That makes sense?
Right, yeah. Because they're going to turn on the money. That is what he's saying.
Well, shouldn't that price be deducted from the two million four hundred fifty thousand? If you do, if you do the math logic...
No, because then he just has to ask you for more money.
Well, I think that's why, I think that's why the whole discussion is happening. The, the project sounds great. I mean, I, when I first met John Grace, the conversation was, how do we get this to be a nonprofit so that all this speculation about what's happening with the nursing home is more transparent? With a nonprofit, you can't just assume that there's a profiteer owning it and taking their cut off of the top while the employees worry about the next payroll check. So that was the discussion we had a year ago. And now we're talking about, yes, that's, that's wonderful to, to move it and transition into a nonprofit. But don't, doesn't everyone here think that if this was financially going to work, that Mr. Grace would be doing it himself? Doesn't everyone think that? That if you have an investor come to your town and buy a big business and spend lots of money and have this projected plan to get it into the black within a year, wouldn't a personal investor take that opportunity? I would.
Have you asked him what he wants out?
Do you have a response for that, Mr. Grace?
Well, because it's just what you said. When I got involved, it was to convert it to a nonprofit. That was the whole process. My company was just the interim step. And at the time, you did not have anyone interested in taking over the nursing home.
We had never asked anyone.
No, there was nobody interested.
We had never asked anyone.
Oh, yeah. There were several people contacted and they said, we have no interest.
Sir, that is not true.
In a small, rural, nonpro, or, uh, worn-out building. No.
Sir, that is not true. I requested, no. I officially requested to do an RFP.
I have talked to other people here who contacted other places. And there was no one interested.
Please give an example.
All kinds of places. Presbyterian Manor, Via Christie.
Who was contacting these people?
Medical Lodge. All those people were contacted.
By, by whom? By whom?
Some of the commissioners, other people in the community.
So would you vouch for that? You, you don't...
Yes, I, yes, I...
You contacted and asked other places if they were interested in investing?
I asked, I asked. I was asking if they were taking on other nursing homes. That should have been documented and we had...
Yeah, he just said he asked if they were taking on other nursing homes. He didn't say he asked if they'd be interested in investing. Because I actually requested to do an RFP officially, whether it be for other leases or whether it be for sale, a combined sale of the building and the business. And we were advised by economic development that we shouldn't get involved in the transfer of one business to another. Uh, if you want to listen to it, we have it on tape from last year. It's been exactly a year since we were having this conversation. So I think there, that, I'm not sure that, Terry, you didn't answer. Were you contacting other nursing homes? I was. And I had two people interested. And one went through our county attorney. We never heard from them again. And the other one basically heard about this investment that was happening and the potential greenhouse situation. And they shied away from that because they didn't really want to be a part of that. That...
The one person you're talking about, her contact, county attorney, also contacted me. They wanted to meet with us separately because they didn't want it in a public meeting. And I declined. I was, I was meeting with them separately.
Well, I appreciate that because it's probably not the best way.
He was all interested enough to come and present a proposal in a public meeting. And I was, and they, as I understand it, were good.
All I'm saying is, we did, we did not seek out other investors. That's all I'm saying. We didn't. That's just a fact. You can read it in the minutes. I made the motion to do RFPs. We were advised not to co-mingle with trying to sell the business when Kirsten owned it. We were advised not to assist her in the sale. Um, and that was internally from county employee, well, county-funded employees.
Other reference made, at the time, long-term care facilities at the hospital, there were references made to try to attract a different company than the one we have. And the two things that I remember being said, one, it wasn't big enough for them to feel as profitable. One person was interested, they wanted guaranteed profit. And that was a number of years ago. I can't tell you the names of the firms, but there were, there were firms contacted at that time.
Okay. We have laid our proposal on the table. There it is. And we can review you?
I have a question, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Did you assume the law of the law? If you were sued, who, who gets sued? County or you?
For what? Eventually... Well, once we assume ownership, we're going to, it's a nonprofit corporation. 501(c)(3) does.
You have insurance for that?
What's that?
Are you carrying insurance for that?
Not today, but if you look at our plan, you'll see we have all that insurance to count it for.
I don't see if we no longer own the facility that we could possibly be likely to have.
Okay, there it is. Anything else? We hurry, we get to the sale, Martin, for lunch.
I would like to clarify two things. Um, number one is, I have never said that there is poor quality of care at the nursing home. Have there been some questionable financial dealings between the county and the nursing home? Absolutely. That has nothing to do with quality of care. And, you know, there have been some discussions lately about that. I have said clearly in the past, even when I rejected the new lease, that we as commissioners have no control over what happens with what the administration and the employees are doing up there. And when they do a fine job, the reward goes to them. And if something happens up there, that, that is for them to handle as their own business. They, they are running a business, whether it be nonprofit or, or, or for-profit. But just so everyone knows publicly, the commission has no control over that facility and what happens there other than the financial aspect itself. Whatever money we give, we can allocate it for specific things. That's why when the bills come across the table and it says, we needed new light bulbs or light switches, we check it and the bill gets paid. Um, there is no actual, I mean, one or more of us can visit up there and develop a relationship, as I know, you know, especially one more than the others have. But that still does not have anything to do with the quality of care. And the employees there need to be proud of themselves. And I know that they are. And they need to take it upon themselves to establish what kind of environment and, and atmosphere is created there. That is not your commission's job. And I just hope that that's, that's clear. That's like saying that the commission, because we allocate specific tax dollars from the county to the schools, that we're responsible for the schooling and the environment and the atmosphere in the schools. That is simply not true. It's our job to decipher where the money goes and for what purpose. And I would, I just want that clarified. That there's no real connection between what the county can do for your nursing home and what it does for itself. So if it's a viable business that can stand on its own and be successful, it will do that regardless of the commission's involvement. Now, the money, they're asking for investment money? I don't know. I mean, is this, this is your first option for seeking finances? Have you applied for, like, economic development loans or, but in, in this other, you can't?
No, not yet.
Why?
There we are. We're unsteady. You can't ask for something you can't get.
But you plan on it.
Yeah, there's always something to look at.
So my, my, my biggest hesitation, and the second thing I want to clarify is, if, if people want to form a group and, and turn it into a business, whether it's nonprofit or for-profit, what's to stop anyone in the county from coming to the commission and requesting money? I mean, if, if I wanted to start a nonprofit, um, for a tree-cutting business and I said, I really, really need this investment, what's to stop me from coming and asking for web fund money?
How many boys are tree cutting?
No, it's the, it's the... It doesn't matter. I, okay, fine. If I wanted, if, if I wanted to recruit the galvanizing plant back, when it would be an option? Did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I have a question for you. Here you go. They, you talked about thirty-two students that was going to live in Lincoln. Now, how do you figure that? I mean, I know people that work out of county. And they still, their kids still go there. She still lives in Lincoln County. So why do you think that?
She said, why, she said if, you said that there were thirty-two students, if they, if they happened, if their parents happened to not work at the nursing home, why would they quit going to the school? Because of... She said, a lot of mothers, students, their parents work out of state. And that's the initial plan that's working here, too.
That might take a thousand dollars?
Jim, when is the projected needed, when do you need this money? Like, what, what's the projected need date?
When they say we're going to do it, then we will.
How long, as, right now, how long can the nursing home sustain itself?
We've got to get the 501(c)(3). We've got to get the licenses. We've got a lot of stuff that we can't do anything until the decision is made that we're going to implement.
Okay, but, but as where it stands right now, how long can the nursing home sustain itself?
Who knows?
Because I'm not understanding. I guess how long...
Right now, they're using thirty-two thousand. No, sorry, that was a chance. Right now, they're using twenty-three thousand.
This part? Because that's so high. How is that going to drop?
Uh, well, not just the cash flow. So this would be your cash flow, like, how much you spent versus how many bills, how many bills you paid and, and you paid and received. But this is probably the investment cost for, like, John Grace didn't get paid. He hasn't been paid yet for what he invested because he hasn't made the money. It would just be the, the total amount that was owed, the total amount.
Okay, so I'm going to ask you, John, the same thing. How long, right now, like, when are you writing, when are you... Just my question. When, when, how long are you getting this?
It's really hard to answer. Because I asked Jim the same thing. What's the, how long would it have to sign that?
John, do you mean, like, there's a lot of... That's what I'm saying. Have you advised them? Does everyone have notes? I mean, why is it all cash? Then that's a problem. I mean, is your other nursing home that you own in Missouri viable and creating a cash flow?
Yeah.
If you don't mind me asking, I mean...
Uh, we don't manage this one in broad cities. We hired a boss. Just start this one. Yeah, also, you've got a lot, you've got a ton of old folks here.
It's continuing to be a problem. And it's not because of the issue. It's because ten years from now, I know, but they, the employees are maybe whatever. See, ten years from now, if it's still not viable, then we're out of the town. And it still goes on.
Well, that's why I'm thinking, yeah.
To be honest, if they're a purpose, like, let's say we are committed, I think, of starting for you.
Yeah.
It makes perfect sense to, like, obviously, look. Here, here's the market structure you can have over the next year, next four years. We don't pay for it. Everyone can sort of, that's fine. But the community doesn't need to look back leadership and see that it's a market investment. Then it works a lot. So there's no guarantee. And now I'm, because the money comes from the, the four years of the whole training. They said, well, in years, they say that the next five, I think, to begin to use this two million dollars to continue that investment, that's a lesson in my experience.
And I think that's where they need to come back with a point and say, this is how this could be done and this would be viable. We, we haven't run all the numbers on this. You know, like, what to do with the old buildings? I mean, are you guys really interested in it at all? But, I mean, the old block.
They talked about it. Unless they're there, they could... Whatever, you know? I mean, they talked about it a variety of ways. But then again, we're still paying expenses in that situation.
Well, you would be, just for that portion.
Unless we could consolidate other parts that were, you know... The expenses that we pay for other... Then we'd make money on the...
There was that old... That old set. It was Milton's, about six people. So we got a new tile in there.
We have a full agenda. I suppose we should just stop here. And, like, do we need to go down?
I'm just wondering if it would be better just to go down and then that way, those that want to stay, continue to talk, you know? But I don't know. It's up to you guys. I don't know how you...
He's chairman, so he should make it a...
Terry. Terry, we have a full agenda. We have a full agenda. And you're already going in. That's... Needs to be what you decide. If they're gonna continue to talk.
Are we going over to Bailey's? You coming over to the partner, Bailey?
Oh, thank you.
Go ahead.
I have my usual reports. And I added the dollars in each account for you. Can I also include the fund accounts? So you can see that the dollars account to the front.
Yeah, that looks great. That's very helpful. Instead of having to look through different reports. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
So just...
The new interest earned is nine thousand five hundred and...
On which?
That's all the records.
That's the total of the county and the county general.
Where are you?
Second page.
Oh, March 30th?
That's more vehicle. I think she's talking about the county.
I always record what the interest earned was for the quarter.
Oh, idle funds, total interest earned, nine thousand five hundred forty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. That's where we are. So county fund totals... When that says county, that's county general.
That's all the county money. That's not the wind farm, the piters, children's, fire. No, maybe it was the fire.
So...
That's all separate.
RFD is fire, right?
Yes.
So county, five million, three hundred forty-four thousand, three hundred ten, ten cents. Pittered, five hundred eighty-eight thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars, ninety-four cents. Children's, two hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred twenty-seven, fourteen cents. Rural fire departments, two hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred two dollars, seventy-five cents. Reappraisal, two thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars, thirty-three cents. Water, what does that say? Water recovery, two thousand six hundred eighteen dollars, eighty-eight cents. Wind power, five million, nine hundred forty-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars and four cents. Have we made any payments out of that yet for the... Out of the wind power fund? Have we?
Yeah, but I don't know if it was March or April.
Oh, after.
So we paid it somewhere in March, somewhere in April.
Because I just gave you the third payment plus, we had the third post.
This is cut off at March 30th.
Right, for the first quarter, yeah. And six hundred dollars cash. For a total of twelve million, three hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight and eighteen cents. Yeah, this says year-to-date activity on the wind power economic benefit, which is different than the interest earned fund, correct? The interest earned fund is what the committee controls?
Yes.
So 118, the economic benefit fund. Year-to-date activity... Oh, no, that's a positive, ninety... Okay, so it doesn't show any withdrawal yet.
I didn't print myself the financial, so...
That's all right. It's just saying, I thought that was a payment, but it would be too small, so... Thank you. That helps to have a balance column. Do we need to... Do we need to go to the basement to put a sign on the door? Oh, thank you.
Somebody told them there that we were going back down to the basement. I was gonna go tell them that it is gonna be up here.
I don't think we're off. All of these people stay in the lower fifth basement.
No, do we need to... What if there's someone in the basement?
There is. There are people in the basement.
Oh.
Mike up here and stuff is down there.
Oh, I don't know.
I'll go tell him.
Thanks.
While we're waiting, can you guys sign that dilapidated housing program?
Yes.
I thought I got it and locked. We got it last week, but I didn't make it upstairs, so I don't know what's on.
Well, I think Adam Hill, we saw him disappeared last week, so we gotta meet him to find him.
No, I don't have it. You have. I think you had it, though, right?
I swear I got it to...
I have been known to be your favorite. I'm sorry.
I really thought I picked it up, so I wasn't gonna ask you this time because I...
We already moved and approved.
Yeah, yeah, we just moved it.
We just need to re-sign with my...
Okay. May I borrow a pen? Thank you.
And then I will to the bracket. I'm gonna have to lose him.
Anybody have any questions for Dan? Thank you.
Thanks.
Michael up here. We're ready for you, Margaret.
Sealed bids from two counties from... Yes.
Just two?
Yes.
So how did you solicit for these bids? Was it through that...
These were direct to county.
You just requested? Okay. And it looks like John here gave us, what, the price of one? And you just double it? Is that what I'm seeing?
No, they did two.
Oh, it says... I'm looking at it.
Just one of the ones. There's two machines listed.
I believe that would be for the backup.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My fault. Looking at the wrong one. This is the difference that I'm getting. I'm getting... Sorry, there's difference. I remember he wrote us these.
Yeah.
I'm getting like four thousand difference. Do you... Did we receive a bid from Foley for just the motor graders? If we do not purchase motor graders?
I have not seen the packet, so I don't know what they put it with.
It looks like they... Okay, did you request it? Thank you. It looks like you requested the bid for the two motor graders and what is the backhoe you're looking at?
Cat four twenty, F2, I2. Are these numbers contingent on buying all three machines?
That's what the letter says.
That's... I mean, that's what I put in there. But we can, I mean, we can... I'm flexible there.
So we don't have a price for, just for comparison, for the motor grader? Without bundling a package to buy the motor graders and the backhoe?
Yeah, that's all. I mean, the two... The motor grader prices are in the backhoe prices there.
It says, "For this pricing, you will need to purchase all three machines from Foley Equipment." So what is the price if it wasn't going to be a bundled package?
Just break that off. It's there.
The numbers would be the same whether we bought the backhoe or not.
Correct, yeah.
What is the name of that purchasing alliance?
NJPA.
NJPA? What's that saying?
Wait, it's National Joint Purchasing Alliance. National Joint Powers Alliance, members two. National Joint Powers Alliance.
Powers. We did not get an NJPA number for the backhoe, correct? When you gave us this comparative, right?
That's true.
Okay. Just longer. Would either of you representatives from the companies care to describe to us any information that we may want to know about that purchasing power alliance?
I apologize. I'm brand new to patrol. I'm not very familiar with it.
Okay. We as a county were looking into if we belong, which I think it's without a fee, correct? If we try to make our larger purchases through this alliance where we can then see bids that have been given to other similar people looking to buy, you know, whether it be a county or another governmental entity, I suppose. We didn't know what the benefits of that were, so we just have a comparative number here to look at from a different county. And that, to me, that would be the benefit of using that channel because you can do a cost analysis comparison to see, you know, what machine, what similar machine has sold for what price. Do you have any experience?
Going through the co-op, all that's doing is giving you that discount for that. Going through the cooperative. With the, I mean, you're already getting the governmental discount right on top of, if you're a member of the NJPA, you'll get, you'll get another discount on top of that. And like my number's all that's what it is.
So whether or not we belong to the NJPA, the bid that you gave us today, there's no, there's no additional discount if we do join? So there's no benefit to us?
Well, it depends how, the bid, I mean, you can, the bid process has already been done as far as that goes. As far as that goes, you can't really go out there and see different, different forms of bids.
Well, we have other bids for the same equipment. Did you, did either of you get a breakdown that you wanted to explain what the prices are?
I don't have that, but what we did was we were looking at the costs of two motor graders and the backhoe. And what I came up with is from Murphy Tractor. On a three ten SL backhoe, one hundred nine thousand five hundred. Two six seven G motor graders, five hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty. And that has a guaranteed trade, five years, one hundred forty-two thousand five hundred per machine.
How much, one hundred forty-two?
One hundred forty-two five hundred.
Done the five year?
Yes. From Foley's, we had a four twenty F2 IT backhoe. One hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-six. Then we have two twelve M three motor graders. Two hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred apiece, which five hundred and seven thousand, I believe, six hundred. And a guaranteed buyback of a hundred thousand per machine.
And that was seven years, correct?
Seven years, yeah. That's a seven year buyback.
It's a hundred and twenty on the twelve M three.
A hundred and twenty on a five year.
On the seven year seven?
Yeah.
It's a hundred and twenty, the hundred thousand for the seven year seven is on the one twenty?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yeah.
That's fine.
What was the correct thing that you said?
The hundred on a seven year, right.
On a one twenty and seven two and three.
Yeah.
And jump a buy one twenty or twelve M three.
Yeah. I was looking down here and trying to figure the machines.
For the trade, for the trade value?
Yeah, these are two different machines.
Yeah.
Here you go. They also did the one twenty M two. And they were at a cost of two hundred forty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-six per machine, which is four hundred eighty-five thousand seventy-two dollars. And the buyback on those, on the seven year is a hundred thousand dollars per machine.
Seven year hour, please.
Seven thou, I believe.
Seven year seven thousand. Both of them are. And that's premier warranty, seven year, seven thousand.
Yeah.
The seven thousand. What was the model number on Murphy's motor grader?
Excuse me?
The model number on Murphy's motor grader?
Six seven G.
Six seven GL. Six seven G, I'm sorry.
Yes, G.
Is that, is that joystick control?
I'm sorry, I don't know this, but I know we were bidding today. Is this the exact same equipment we had bids on last year? Same models?
I believe it is one B.
I assume you realize we're gonna be making a decision today. Anyone have any questions? You have any questions for the gentleman?
I would just like to state that the, if they're the exact model number, which I think, I know, I checked at least one. The NJPA number that we got from February from a county is higher than what you gave us as a private bid on both of these.
That can happen a lot, and that can happen.
What's that?
Significantly.
It just depends how it's rigged. I mean, as long as, if the years and hours and the machine spec, how it's specced out is all the same too. That can make that very-
Specs can make a huge difference.
There's that. One bid had a scarfer on it or something, Devon River, what was it?
Uh, one of them, I believe so.
I believe one of them.
And it could have longer, you know, warranty terms, things like that, and that can really accelerate that.
I think it's planned.
Accelerate that too.
You have, both have copies still?
Um, I haven't seen anything from Foley.
You need a copy of Murphy's, Bob?
We have a copy between the pair.
She'll be good on that.
And share?
Yeah.
This is Murphy's.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you. You better.
As a, I have one, I just wanted to add that with that price and also, and I mentioned a little bit last year, but it's been a really great success story for as far as that stable blade. Where the operator, they can either run it or not run it, they choose to, but the operator is really, it will derate you and help take the chatter out of the road. And then also with the advanced joysticks, we can rig it to have your lift group work off your advanced joysticks instead of, I'm calling, just a couple of nice features there.
Stable blade is included in the price.
Correct, yes, yeah.
Um, I, well, we're out, we're out of time, I guess. Who's on the other end?
It's one of my questions to both salesmen is, what kind of delivery date would we be looking at?
I can give you an exact number. We're looking about two, two and a half months depending on product availability.
Two to three and a half months.
Two to two and a half months.
I gotta check on the twelve M threes. We, once the order is signed, then can really lock in, lock in a timeline date and see what's coming, what it's gonna hit. The one, one is pretty sure I have on the ground, but I think I'll have to check on the twelve M threes. And the backhoe, the backhoe should be on the ground too.
Backhoe.
I know we're short on time, but before you leave, I've had several requests for signage. I know we've been talking about different things, and you guys have already looked at K eighteen, those haven't gone in yet, have they?
Yeah.
What have you put in?
No.
Eighteen is in.
Eighteen else, yes.
Eighteen is.
But, okay, and then we're looking at fourteen?
We're pricing fourteen right now.
Okay. I have some additional, just, and these, I don't know, I didn't look at the map to see if any, I know some of them are probably the major collectors. But there's, there's been a recent surge in phone calls to me about concerns about signage on some of the roads. So I think we need to consider what will be next after we look at fourteen. I know we're starting with the bigger roads, but for example, if you go all the way up north on one eighty-one to, I believe it's Wheat. I wanna say Wheat. They look, someone has literally painted tires and written Wheat.
Or Griffin did that.
Is that Wheat Drive, Out of Concern, you know, Safety, all of those things. So I think we need to start addressing that because we do budget for signs every year. And from what I've seen in the past several years, we haven't used all of that money, so we need to be turning over that money to produce those, that signage. And what we did out of the lake, the project that you did out of the lake, seemed very affordable to me. So I think we need to look at that. And then Mary just brought in a letter. Her concern is Union on one eighty-one, there's no sign up for Union. And then I believe north on-
Eightieth and Vine.
Eightieth and Vine is the other one that she addressed. Maybe we should-
Margaret's looking at one eighty-one next.
Oh, good, yeah, you have a copy for them. So maybe Union would be the next road we could look at? You know, those intersections and that, as the next sign project?
Probably do something like the Union and one eighty-one or something like that.
Right. All the way north on one eighty-one and Union across, yeah, west to east.
Alexis, I thought at one time there was a sign at Union and one eighty-one.
There would have been.
I'm sure there were signs. You can see a lot of them are broken off or, you know, but we need to keep up on that. I think you've done a good job addressing one project at a time. Think we can keep continuing into the future, pre-planning the next project, and I would like to see that. That's for my district. I can't speak for them. But I've had several phone calls lately.
You have anything else, Michael?
Not today, I do not.
Good.
Glad to offer your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I sent somebody downstairs to see if-
She's here. She's here. She's back here.
You wanna come up, Don?
Well, we'll have one for the week.
Thank you.
More rain coming, maybe.
Looks like it.
Good morning. I had emailed out on Thursday, I believe last week, copies of these, but I got our copies for you. That is the adult grant. There's the juvenile grant.
These are the same that we were emailing out there?
Yes, yes. This is the behavior health grant, which is a supplement to the adult. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Well, excuse us, we're in a temporary home.
Okay, so I'm here for approval on our FY nineteen fiscal grants. And just to kind of give you a summarization, the adult grant is the same allocation as last year. And kind of focuses on, you know, just running shop with two adult probation officers and a part-time, two full-time and one part-time officer. And then giving cognitive-based treatment to our adult offenders. With that, we have the behavior health supplement that kind of gives more direct client services. So we are transporting offenders to treatment. We are helping them purchase services that they may not be able to pay for themselves, such as, you know, mental health or substance abuse treatment, sex offender evaluations, helping them with housing. They need help putting it down, or a deposit down on a place to rent or paying that first month's rent. Those are kind of some of the things that the behavior health grant is helping pay for. And we've also, in the behavior health grant, have put in for a part-time care coordinator position that we would coordinate with Monumental Health to help provide additional services to the offenders. That amount, I believe, is, was that eighty-nine thousand? And that is just, we came up with-
And, um, that is just, we come up with what, what we think we would need, and then they will shoot us back whether, how much of that application they would actually fund.
So would you have to hire a grant machine?
Yes, we would work with Ponte Mental Health, actually would be one of their staff people, um, they would actually supply the person, and we would like collaborate with him to provide that service.
So here in Lincoln County, since we're not with Ponte Mental Health, is that...
That would not be an issue. We would, we would have this person come into Lincoln County and work with the offender directly in the county. So how does our county decide which mental health organization? Because we're already funding out of Salina, what is it called?
Central Kansas.
Yeah, Central Kansas Mental Health. So how does that work with dual services being provided here? They wouldn't be, they wouldn't be billing the client for anything. We would actually, they'd be like a subcontractor for us, and it doesn't really mean that they would be going to Ponte Mental Health, it's just this person would be coordinating their care, so they would be coming to Lincoln County and say, say for instance, um, they needed to get to Central Kansas, they would actually, you know, either get them there or be that, um, so say they couldn't get a, an appointment with Central Kansas for like, three weeks, so they would actually be able to come into the home and work with that individual to try to keep them stable.
Those are the judicial districts provider.
Does that mean it's court-appointed? No. So it's basically the same services as in Central Kansas Mental Health?
Yeah, it's just contracts, they contract with the judicial district, not the county.
Right, and so they, they wouldn't actually be giving them counseling services.
Yeah.
They would kind of be like that liaison, that, that person that helps, I mean, they could kinda be like a care coordinator, kind of like a case manager, but, um... So what is the additional grant request funding for that portion? Is that, in addition to, what, is there a separate monetary request? It says total voucher funds, I don't know what that means, but, um, funding request, the total program, that your total program for that addition is fifty-nine thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars for the year? Is that what I'm reading? Okay, no. Those, that's a portion of our, um, in-house, um, probation officers to provide cognitive-based treatment to our offenders, so they, um, have different programs that they offer our adult offenders, whether it's in a group-like setting, or whether it's individually in the middle of their probation meeting. That's that fifty-nine thousand. That also includes transportation, um, a transport driver to, to bring the offenders to treatment, wherever that is in the state. Total funding request, eighty-nine thousand three hundred eighty-seven for behavior health. The part that's the care coordinator position that would be collaborating with Ponte Mental Health is sixteen thousand three twenty-one ninety-seven, that includes the salary and benefits. So are you requesting from Lincoln County two separate grants? One for your actual budget, and then an additional amount for this provision of the... Okay. I, I'm not actually requesting Lincoln County, I'm not pressing any money from Lincoln County, these are, and, state law grants that we apply for, I just need, um, every county in our district, our six county district, um, approval to submit these grants as written, so that the money comes from the state of Kansas. Okay, I was, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry then, I was looking at this as total contract client services category for dollar amount, I thought that was addressed to us. Okay, I apologize. That's okay, I'm, I'm new, you'll have to...
They have to apply to the state through the judicial district for their funding, and because we're part of the judicial district, we have to sign off on...
We're approving what you're going to request from the state. Right, yes. And then Cloud County is our host county, and they're the ones that actually monitor our funds that come in, but we still report to all six counties. So what portion of Central Kansas Mental Health budget comes from state allocated funds similarly?
Different programs that they have are funded, imparted by the state.
And your board approves that?
Yeah.
So your board approves that after they've gotten, had the county approved? Our board has already approved this, we had a meeting last week, and they approved all their grant applications, and so now we're just making the rounds to the six counties. Yes.
There are specific programs that they have, they're not through the judicial district, through the courts, Central Kansas Mental Health.
And additionally, so the, the juvenile application that's in there, um, it's the same allocation as last year, um, and just probably the, the biggest difference that I'll point out is that we've had a shift with this new senate bill on the new Juvenile Justice Reform Act, we've had a shift basically from allocating, um, a lot of those funds to the case management program or kids in state custody. That has shrunk considerably, because as you know, there's no out-of-home placements, well, there's very limited, um, and so they're keeping the kids in the community, so we're shifting more of that allocation to community-based programs. The IIP stands for Immediate Intervention Program, that's the new diversion program that's required through that new bill, that we, we offer then, this diversion program within our agency. So do you have any statistical information, like, breakdown by county, and I know I've seen it in the past, but do you produce that every year for, um, basically access and/or usage of a program, breakdown by county? No, um, okay, financial question, by program as far as... Any of these that, that you're offering, like, in the, on the last page, it gives the financial breakdown to the cost, um, drug testing, substance abuse, mental health evaluations, sex offender evaluations, academic education services, vocational education services, transportation assistance, housing assistance, et cetera, et cetera, do you have the statistical breakdown by county as far as Lincoln County utilized, you know, three mental health treatment services and one housing assistance, or Cloud utilized fifty-four substance abuse evaluation, just... Right, we do not have the statistics compiled, it is something we can get it, you know, 'cause we, we do have to track all that information, and we have to report back to the state, but, but I don't believe we've been keeping track of it per county-wise. You know, and our, our numbers fluctuate, um... I think for us, it would be a help to know, you know, let's just say we have no other usage of your programs that are state-funded, except for, for example, mental health, but we're already funding as a county for a mental health provider to come in and provide services.
They don't do it for the district court, there's district court programs, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
But you're saying they're not court, it's not a court-appointed attendance? Well, it is, it, I... Oh, he just said it wasn't. Well, no, I think I said that, um...
I said they are, Central Kansas Mental Health does.
Right, so they are, they are court-appointed to be on probation and to participate in any programs. Let's just talk strictly mental health, if you're, if you're court-appointed to seek mental health services... Yes. Must they use out of Ponte, or, or may they choose Central Kansas who... That is their choice. To whom we already give funds, is what I'm saying. That is their choice to pick, and we cannot, you know, we cannot tell them who to go to, we can give them what's available, and then that's their choice to pick. But, so then basically it's not court-appointed, because they're not saying, you know, you are mandated to receive these services, you seek out these services.
Central Kansas, they're not part of the judicial system.
The offender is court-appointed to attend. But what she's saying is they have their choice, they don't...
Yeah, but they're not, Central Kansas isn't appointed by the judicial district to cover those people.
And if they're court, if they're court-appointed, they may also seek private services. Absolutely.
I think the offenders just have to prove that they followed through on whatever the court order says.
But I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, in other words, she doesn't represent the 12th Judicial District Community Corrections on behalf of saying, these, this many people were mandated to our services, it's not, uh, it's not a mandate, it's basically just an option, because if and when an offender is mandated to receive services, it can, they can go to Central Kansas Mental Health, they can go to their private provider, they can go out of county, that's what I'm getting at, it's not a mandated, uh, service through you, if it is a, if they're court-appointed to do that. Right, right, and the care coordinator position would just be another, um, support to that client, not providing the mental health services, it's just mental health support. Okay, I, I understand now.
I would move to have the chairman sign that, have grant applications for Lincoln County.
Have a motion to sign, uh, grant applications for a court of justice to agree. Go to second. I will second. Is there any further discussion?
I just have one more question, um, when I, when you started, that's what led me to believe there was a state, a, a county portion of the budget to be approved, because you said it was the same amount as last year, so you're saying the total dollar amount that you're applying to the state for everything is the same dollar amount as it was last year? Correct, with the exception of the behavior health, which... That eighty-nine thousand? Right. That wasn't, that didn't exist last year? It did exist, but it, um, with the DOC and the juvenile services, they tell us what our allocation is, and then we have to make that fit our budget, okay, so they tell us... So last year, what was it, for example? For behavior health, um, it's, we can apply for however much we want, they come back and they tell us how much they're going to award. Last year, we got, I believe it was around seventy-nine thousand, seventy-four thousand, um, we could actually apply for about a hundred and forty-one thousand, because we applied for a full-time care coordinator. So this time you're applying for eighty-nine to add something, and you'll see what is given after that. Correct, yes, and they will tell us what they're going to fund. But your major budget portion for a hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and forty-three is what you're requesting, in, in the same dollar amount as it was last year, and it was approved last year for the exact dollar amount? Yes, correct.
Is there any further discussion? No, I would, I would say aye.
Aye. Thank you. Sorry, I've got the originals here. Okay, that's the juvenile service.
We got to keep these, you need to have copies designed on.
I'm sorry, I just need to, you're up one, I just came from Lloyd's.
Um, speaking of the board too, um, we looked at members, term members last week, and I knew yours was coming up, I didn't know if there would be, if somebody else was gonna be appointed, if you're gonna be removed.
I, I have asked, and we haven't really had that discussion, um, so I, I guess we could continue deciding that.
Okay, will there be somebody maybe at the July meeting to, we will probably do resolutions, um, before that July first date, the term ends on, um, June thirtieth, I believe, so...
July, what?
Well, just, our next meeting will be July eighteenth, I believe it is, um...
Third Wednesday.
Yep, the third Wednesday still, and so we will do, we'll try to have our resolutions done before then, and I believe the current term expires June thirtieth. I guess we'll be able to have a chance to discuss that by then, and maybe I'll shoot Wanda an email, or myself, either way. Okay?
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. David, are you in here?
On the top of the agenda that I'd like to speak to about this morning is the National Weather Service, um, forecast for this week, um, there's two opportunities for rain, um, again, Weather Service, Pat, she has precipitation Tuesday during the day, and then a chance of precipitation Tuesday night, sixty percent still. Those are the two opportunities that we have this week, and I, I've seen the long-range forecast, and they're, they're expecting rain Tuesday, Wednesday next week also. Again, things are still pretty brown, a lot of green going on still, um, there, things are starting to turn green, but, um, we had about an inch rain on Denver Island, and I don't know what the rest of the counties, um, received, but, again, didn't know if you wanted to maintain the burn ban or lift it.
How much rain did you have, Mr. Wehrman? Howard, how much rain did you have?
Almost one inch.
Almost.
I had an inch.
Mr. Snyder?
Three quarters.
Mr. Webke? Tim?
B.
What do you think? Steve?
About three point four acres of CRB along a river that we like to burn. It's supposed to be burning about fifteen.
Do you have a recommendation for the board?
I would say lift it, uh, again, there's gonna be more expected rain Tuesday, and again, I would say lift it, 'cause I know...
I've received requests, but, I mean, it's not my decision, and I don't mind having a meeting when it's dry, over the phone, to instate it, it's just frustrating for people who may not know or find out, and if there is some sort of consequence, it doesn't seem fair, um, but I'm not, there's no shame in, in my mind to turn it on and off as needed, regardless of what other county commissions were saying about us acting with the ballgame.
I missed, I missed the last one, I missed the burn three of the rover, and then by six o'clock that night, you...
Well, and that's...
You know, there, there really isn't an excuse, 'cause any fire that's set is supposed to be called to the sheriff's department, so, the sheriff's department knows when it goes on and off, so if that call's made, then you know that, that it's on or off, I mean, that's, that's a policy we've had, you know, to try to let people know, since we're in a rural area and, and there isn't, but I, I would be in favor of lifting it, I think it's probably...
Is that true, even of a garbage burn? In a burn barrel, or...
It is.
Is that a county resolution? What...
Yes.
I think that, uh, if we're gonna lift it, this, this week's probably the best shot when we're sure looks, so...
And again, with that, previously, we'd had a discussion about, about the ordinance, that particular ordinance, reference to burn ban, being published in the paper, I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll fork the bill for that to have it published, I don't have any bones about that.
Please.
How big a ban would you like it to be? I'd go a page for quite a price.
I think it'd be more important to do two consecutive than one big one.
Or again, two, the western part, which I'd, I'd contact the Lucas paper also, and ask them during that also, but I can run it for two consecutive weeks, and again, I can send, I, last time we enacted the burn ban, I sent out, had information out on Civic ready, last notification system, but again, not everybody signed up for that.
Well, and I did, and I'm still, I got my school notification, I went back on the website to redo everything, got my school notifications, got my city notifications, and I'm still not gotten county notifications from emergency meetings.
And, and again, I went back and looked at your particular...
Account.
Account, and you have three accounts, three active accounts, is what it showed on, on the administration site that I have access to, so at, at some point, you know, get with me or...
Well, I mean, I know, I've tried multiple times through the website, so if that's reactivating a new account every time, I don't know, but this last time I got my notification about school, um, the city, and nothing from the county, when the burn ban was...
Yeah, I heard last time it called off.
I'm sorry. It didn't come, nothing has come through.
Okay, okay.
So I don't know what the technical problem is there, but I did try to re-up it technically, and it worked for the other entities, so I don't know. Um, how do we do that? By rescinding?
Have a resolution, yeah, well, I'll have to, get us a resolution, she'll get it.
You're going, David.
Okay. The next thing, uh, uh, again, just my activities that I've been doing, um, March twenty-seventh, had North Central Regional Homeland Security meeting, uh, discussed fund, funding that was left from the appointed projects in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, of the fifteen budget of two hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars, all but fifty-three dollars and thirty-four cents have been spent, of the FY sixteen budget of two hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars, we are eighty-four percent done with projects, and for the FY seventeen budget of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred and ten dollars, around thirty-five percent of the project funds have been spent. Projects that have been included in the fifteen, sixteen, seventeen budget include light towers, personal protective equipment, gas masks, um, for the North Central Regional SWAT team, CO monitors for EMS, first aid kits for certified LEO, law enforcement officers through KLETS, the training center down in... through Klets, the training center down in Hutch.
Do we have these, the statistics that you're giving?
This information, no.
No, okay.
No. And discussion of projects and project timelines that are, that are coming up for eighteen also. April third and fourth, was at a cyber security class attended in Wichita, was presenting information about cybersecurity and the ever-changing technology problems faced by today's society. There was a representative that was there from Department of Homeland Security, Chuck Clannahan, is a protective security advisor for DHS in the Kansas district. He is available to review, review, and assess your security items that you have in place and make an advisement of things that you can do to create a more secure cyber infrastructure. April ninth, had a MARC class. MARC stands for Multi-Agency Resource Center. Class hosted by the American Red Cross, myself, and the Ottawa County Emergency Manager. And we had that class in Beverly. It was a three and a half hour class. And the Multi-Agency Resource Center teaches how to set up a shelter, providing, in the event you have a disaster, that, that you have all these, it's kind of a one-stop shop. Healthcare, insurance, KDHE, anything pertaining to a disaster, any necessity or, or, what's the word I'm looking for? Capability would, you'd all have them located in that one spot. With that, we had the Ottawa County Health Department, Lincoln County Health Department, CERT teams from both counties, CERT, Community Emergency Response Teams, and the members of the Beverly, Barnard, and Tuscaloosa Fire Departments. We had twenty-two people that attended the three and a half hour session. April twelfth, I'm out with a school nurse and one of the EMTs here in Lincoln. The school nurse had approached me and the EMT agency about co-hosting an event out of the school district on the twenty-sixth pertaining to distracted driving, consequences of distracted driving, and whatever kind of presentation we wanted to put together that's going to happen over at the Lincoln School District. The Sylvan School is bussing their nine through twelve kid, aged kids over here for this presentation. We're going to do about an hour and fifteen minutes in, in the gymnasium with part of that, like freshman sophomore class, and the other time, we're going to have individuals out distracted driving on golf carts out at the practice field along with Dustin Florence. The under sheriff is going to present statutory regulations on things that can happen if you commit vehicular homicide to an individual. And that's, that's coming up on the twenty-sixth. April eighteenth, had an EOP, which is the Operation Plans Workshop up in Beloit. That was how to log in and make changes to the EOP as it is a living document. The current EOP is current through February thirteenth of two thousand twenty. Also received information pertaining to state emergency disaster response. It was noted that for reporting purposes, when calling the staff duty officer line at the, at the staff duty officer, it is the emergency manager that must communicate with that staff duty officer at KDM. You have fire chiefs, you have city mayors, you have county commissioners that take that upon themselves to make that notification. KDM has mandated that it must be through the emergency manager or their designee. If, if I'm out in Pueblo at training, and again, Jeremiah Zaco is, is my part-time person that's graciously volunteered to become my, my assistant. With that, this must be done through the county EM for the past three year, and then, excuse me, for the past three years, when the Black Hawk helicopters have been deployed to utilize for fighting the grass fires, there has been no charge from the state level for this resource. However, that can always change at any point. I was made aware at this training that I was at on the eighteenth, that the Blackhawks assigned to the Kansas Air National Guard are getting deployed, and the ones that have been deployed are coming back. And we will, they will be on leave, the ones that are coming back will be on leave for a hundred and eighty days. So the state of Kansas will have no National Guard helicopters. But KDM, its Division of Emergency Management, has activated the Emergency Management Assistance Compact, EMAC, to have the Nebraska, to have Nebraska bring their helicopters down when we're staging, or when we, we find out that their fire risks are going to be higher elevated. April twenty-fourth, excuse me, April twenty-first, had a sheltering class again over in Beverly, hosted again with Red Cross, Ottawa County Emergency Management, myself. Training classes now, the training class was how to set up a shelter for people to come in the event of an incident. It's different than a MARC training session. Again, the, the people that you're going to need to set up that shelter, whether you're going to need people to stay overnight for an extended amount of time, or if you're just feeding them, again, services that you have available was taught at that class. The training was attended by, again, Lincoln County Health Department, Ottawa County Health Department, Lincoln and Ottawa County CERT teams, and members of the Beverly and Barnard Fire Department. We had fourteen people that attended that four-hour presentation. I've had repairs done at pickup, hail damage fixed from last March hailstorm, front end repair because the tires were not tracking right, and were wearing on the inside of the tires. And then I also had to purchase two tires because I had a flat on one of those tires. FEMA has not released the FY eighteen Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG grant yet. FEMA Region Seven has indicated they think this will be around the end of May. Then, KDM will apply to FEMA for the grant within two to four weeks, depending on the deadline they give us. After that, we will release an application package with new guidelines to, out to the counties for two thousand eighteen. Last year's amount for the EMPG grant was seventy-seven twenty-four, and in two thousand sixteen, it was seventy-six forty-nine. Again, that, that amount of money depends on how many counties apply within the state. So there's little variance to that usually. Lincoln County Fire Districts received their Fire Mitigation Assistance Grant, the FMAG money from Russell County last week, from the Wilson Fire Complex last March sixth and seventh, started in Russell County. The back page of your packet of paper, packet of information, has the amount of money that each agency will be rewarded. Beverly Fire District is getting seventeen hundred dollars. Deadmark Hunter is getting seven hundred and eighty-three twenty-eight. Emergency Management, three hundred and twenty-six fifty-two. Lincoln First Rural, four thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-six cents. Sylvan Grove Rural Fire, six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. The Westfall Fire District, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. Total of that whole check for the county is fourteen thousand, four hundred, correction, fourteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and eleven cents. So again, with that FMAG, again, we had, we had a memorandum of understanding or agreement that we would help neighboring counties when there was a fire or something bad happened in their district. With that, that's the reason we were eligible for those funds. Reference equipment time and firefighter time, there's a formula that FEMA uses in, in rewarding those, those funds. In addition to that, I previously spoke about having a memorandum of understanding in, in place with neighboring jurisdictions in the event that something bad happens. During that timeframe, you have seventy-two hours that you must have that MOU in place after that incident. Seventy-two hours after that incident, we're all going to be busy. I, myself, fire, search and rescue, hazmat if they have to come in, whatever agencies we have are going to be busy. And I'd hate at that time to be having to go, hey, I need to get your signature, we need to have a special meeting. I, I've typed up some memorandum of, of understanding, or MO, memorandum, excuse me, mutual aid agreement, excuse me. And this is a copy for each of the counties around us. And you can look through it, and again, I'll leave these here. I don't need signatures today, but, and it's just by the chairperson. But with that, it was brought to my attention that if there is a disaster, like with this FMAG, if we said that we do not want to participate, that the verbiage on that will disallow us to be funded by, by a federal disaster, or that we wouldn't be eligible to, to be able to recoup money that we had put in.
Then we already discussed this with the fire chiefs?
Yes.
And is this in addition to the mutual...
This is...
Mutual aid.
But you had prepared something last year that we had...
But, but I never did follow through with that, or never did get signed off on, and then I was told that we needed to have it to where we have the accessibility to Article Three, the payment, down at the bottom of page one. "In the spirit of mutual aid, the assisting jurisdiction may determine to waive reimbursement for some or all of the costs related to the mission. Any partial or full waiver or reimbursement shall not be contingent upon jurisdictions receiving federal funds as a result of a major disaster declaration by the president under the Stafford Act, but rather based upon the hardship that it would cause the requesting jurisdiction." And again, that verbiage is in the state's mutual...
So I don't have the one you created last year in front of me? I mean, I'm sure I have it at home, but how, is this...
Just the verbiage, that, that payment?
It's pretty much the same.
The same, except for the payment option, section down there. And again, you've got to leave that accessibility, and if you can, yes, agree to, get funded, because again, if you don't have the verbiage in there that you agreed to that, then any, like this FMAG, we'd have been out that fourteen thousand dollars. So that big fire was a good thing for the...
So basically, you're saying if, if by chance there was a reimbursement to Lincoln County for having gone into Russell County to aid, you're, that you're making a statement that that's not going to be contingent upon receiving federal reimbursement that you may apply for in the meantime?
Mm-hmm, correct.
And vice versa?
Correct. And again, I have, I have each of the, each of the copies that I presented you, they're each a different copy for a different county of surrounding us, Wausau, Ottawa, Mitchell, Ellsworth, Osborne, and who am I missing?
I thought I listed all of them.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Russell. Well, it does on there, but down at the bottom, on each signature page, it has the chairperson from like those particular agencies also, and along. Again, what I was hoping for was at some point, you guys would discuss this, whatever, and then get that documentation back to me. And I set the date out far enough that I could forward it to that, to the emergency manager of those counties, have them communicate with me if they had any questions. Again, legal counsel from Lincoln County has looked at that and said she's fine with that.
I guess my only question is who authorizes it when it happens?
Who authorizes?
It, basically, it's saying if requested, or if we realize that there's need for our services, or we need outside services here. I mean, what, what's the approval process at the time, in real time?
Generally, fire one per district, and...
I'm sorry, it's generally...
Fire chief or the fire board for that particular...
Correct, correct. Or again, too, if there's a disaster declaration that's been signed, then that, this kicks in then, at that point. But the agreement allows you to go into their county and help fight fire. Because again, when the fire started over, over at the Russell Lake Complex last year, it was, it was in Russell County. But it quickly got to Lincoln County that afternoon.
Well, and I, I thought this was a good idea last year, so I'm not opposed to...
But again, the verbiage in it, I was told, needed to be changed, so I modified it in that way.
Who, who gave you advice on the document, just out of curiosity?
The state. KDM.
I don't need to interrupt, but apparently they have court this afternoon, so we probably need to move, continue or move downstairs.
We'll go back downstairs.
And again, that's all I have for you folks, for my part of my presentation, of this presentation. If you guys just want to keep all those, those packets, that last packet, I just handed out.
Well, I don't, I guess I am. I'm comfortable signing for myself, approving it today.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
I'm, I'm, I'm favored this.
Me too.
I would move that the chairman sign the mutual aid agreements with the counties.
Is there any further discussion? Not, I would like to say aye.
Aye.
We may need it sometime, too.
Do you want to announce that we're going to be...
We're going to go back down. There's the other room, I guess they need the courtroom after that.
I guess it's a little rough if I, if someone's getting...
Did everyone hear that? We're going to...
Yes.
Give a little short one. David, you want to go ahead and run a little bond? I've got some other stuff to do, but we'll take care of you first.
Thank you very much. After my presentation, I'll give everybody a copy of my presentation, as well as a synopsis, background, and some recitations. And this, I only made one copy of, but this is basically all the open record, or most of the open records that we obtained that relate to this matter, and that we think substantiate the concerns that I'm going to discuss today during, during my presentation. And I'll leave this with you as well.
Good.
Good afternoon, and thank you for providing me the time to address the full commission with some concerns I have regarding KSA seventy-five forty-three oh four and the continuing alleged O'Hare Law LLC, four thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and eight cent monthly orally made service contract being paid out of the county attorney's elected office budget each month. Six months ago, these allegations only concern the county attorney's conduct. Unfortunately, because of your actions over the past six months, I fear that some of you may also be facing sanctions or recourse. Six months ago, on October twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, I came before you, and I provided information concerning serious allegations I believe were well-known to this commission prior to my initial appearance. The allegations involved conflicted contract-making and participation in the making of professional service contracts by the Lincoln County Attorney with a firm the Lincoln County Attorney had a substantial interest in, O'Hare Law LLC. This matter also involved contract billing statements and payments that you were approving and for which you also permitted the use of public monies. I was very careful six months ago not to offer my opinion on whether KSA seventy-five forty-three oh four was being violated by the county attorney. At the end of my presentation back in October, you may recall that I asked that you follow your sworn oaths and uphold and follow the laws of the state, and I asked you to seek a legal opinion from the state attorney general. I hope all of you recall that. I certainly recall that. I've waited six months for some members of this commission and the county attorney to do the right thing. I think I've also been very patient, despite what I recall some of you said about my presentation and in the discussions that have ensued over the prior six months. In fact, I believe today may be six months to the very day I spoke before this commission about this serious concern. After reading numerous previous Kansas attorney general and governmental ethics commission opinions, and obtaining records under the Kansas Open Records Act, and watching videos of recorded commission meetings allowed under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, I believe that there is substantiation that supports the allegation that Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney, in her official capacity as Lincoln County Attorney and as a principal member in O'Hare Law LLC, may have violated and may be continuing to violate the conflicted contract-making and participation prohibitions in KSA seventy-five forty-three oh four. Let me be clear, I am not accusing her of being guilty of a crime as it relates to the statute. However, as the highest law enforcement officer in this county, and an officer of the court, the county attorney must be held to the highest standard when it comes to matters of public integrity and avoiding conflicts of interest, which include conflicted contract-making. As the county commission is the highest elected authority body in this county, this commission has to be held to the highest standard when it comes to avoiding conflicted contracting arrangements as well. If the county attorney and county commission can't be trusted to contact the Kansas Governmental Ethics Commission before participating in contracting like this, it raises questions for some of you about your fitness to continue in your elected positions as commissioners. Other Kansas state agencies, Kansas cities, school districts, and counties regularly seek the guidance from the Ethics Commission before acting in contracts like this. Other Kansas state agencies, Kansas cities, school districts, and counties regularly seek opinions from the state attorney general when there's even the slightest suspicion that they may not be complying with state laws that they are not exempt from. For years, citizens have had concerns about these alleged conflicted contract-makings, and I believe it was their concerns that prompted Commissioner Flew to investigate. When my wife and I heard these rumors, as we've done with other rumors, we looked into the matter ourselves. We've never had a vendetta against the county attorney or any of you. I hope that you recall that when questions about these payments to O'Hare LLC were first raised by a newly-elected commissioner, I believe excuses were made claiming these were reimbursements for things like the copy machine. But I believe you will recall, after records revealed the Canon copy machine was indeed paid by the county attorney's budget separately from these monthly contractual payments, that the story seemed to shift again, trying to argue there were still some other legitimate reimbursements that were being paid for. When Commissioner Flew persisted in her questioning and kept trying to get more details on what these reimbursements were for, I recall that even the county attorney herself responded to one of her questions with a question of her own, which I found to lack candor. You may recall that a high FBI official recently lost his job for answering questions with a lack of candor. The county attorney, I believe, is an officer of the court, and while she may not be under oath when speaking before the commission... oath when speaking before the commission, I believe that answering a serious question about how public monies are being spent out of her official office budget with a question that completely evades the question being asked only serves to increase the suspicion that she may be in violation of KSA 754304. It certainly raised my suspicions. I hope this commission will recall that this exchange was videotaped and is available for anyone to watch online. I believe that when this matter is referred to the proper investigational authorities, they may be interested in that verbal exchange as well. I believe when an experienced attorney responds to a question, by responding with another question without answering the original question, it is a conscious and well-honed act to evade the question. I've honestly lost track of all the stories and excuses I've heard from certain elected officials since these payments began being scrutinized. When my wife and I requested billing and other records through the Kansas Open Records Act, we discovered that there apparently was never any signed contract between the county attorney, the O'Hare Law LLC firm, or Lincoln County. For now, it has approached or passed over two hundred thousand dollars in law firm payments. That alone raises serious questions about the prudence and lawfulness of this county and the county attorney. Who on earth has ever heard of a law firm that bills tens of thousands of dollars a year without an engagement contract with terms, stipulations, and other signed contractual items? Who on earth has ever heard of a government entity that doesn't use purchase orders and other contractual instruments that set the terms and conditions of any long-term and substantial monthly professional services contract like this? When through open records requests, no signed written contract could be found, we were then told by an elected official that these were orally made service contracts. Well, that's probably a new one for the state of Kansas, and it might be a new one for the attorney general, too, which is why I provided this commission a list of questions back in October, which I had hoped you would seek a legal opinion for. After we received the billing records, we discovered that the service contract invoices seemed to be duplicated invoices, redated, without any itemization or substantiation of claims for payment beyond the actual labor being claimed. The labor itself wasn't being itemized. Each bill didn't even have a start and end of service date. Who has ever received a law firm bill like this? Even after nearly more than four years of this business arrangement, I don't think anyone knows how many hours of labor O'Hare Law LLC actually provides this county in a given month. So no matter how busy the county attorney may claim her elected office staff is chasing bad checks or pleading out cases, and regardless what her utility bills are in any month, it is alleged that she approves payments to her law firm for the exact same amount every month. I will also offer this opinion. The entire situation appears to be just as bad as the Kansas state legislature probably expected a conflicted contract making might be, which is probably why they prohibit elected officials from participating in any way with contracting with firms they have a substantial interest in, as previous attorney general opinions, including 82144, have said clearly. One thing that is indisputable is that since these conflicted contracts began, they cost the cost to the county has nearly tripled compared to what the service contracts used to cost by the previous law firm, nearly tripled. And please, I recall all the excuses I've heard made to date, and I reject every one of them. Whether or not KSA 754304 has been violated, I think this arrangement is conflicted, just like a lot of dealings this county gets involved with, and it doesn't serve the public interest. If the county attorney ever felt her workload was not adequately compensated, she had every right to negotiate a higher salary. When she recently was offered that at a commission meeting, I recall she responded, and I quote, "We're not there yet." That's on videotape. What does that even mean? I will respectfully submit that if the county offered a higher salary, other attorneys might actually move to Lincoln County and run for this elected position, and I think the county attorney knows it. The benefits that the county attorney derives from this obviously conflicted arrangement, in my opinion, greatly exceeds her county attorney's salary. The monthly service contract payments alone may be greater. All the equipment, telecommunications services, technical support, warranty contracts, shared equipment, perhaps even shared office supplies, and certainly shared employees, allowed the county attorney, in my opinion, to split off from the old firm she worked at, set up very nice digs on Lincoln Ave. with combined signage showing her elected office position in her private law firm with her own name on the window. I believe that the county attorney gained substantially bigger and better furnished offices, recently remodeled, I might add, for the Jennifer O'Hare's newly formed law firm that she might not have had if she kept her private law office separate from our elected law office. I find it hard to believe that at minimum it would have been a lot harder to employ her sister full-time in her new law firm had she not been able to sign up the county as one of her largest and consistent business clients through this professional services contract. The current contracting arrangement, I believe, puts nearly as much or more money into the O'Hare Law LLC than Jennifer O'Hare may make through her county salary. I've also walked through the courthouse. I've seen how much wasted space this county has created in it. You basically have a large rec room for the county bus drivers in one office, and then you have another office that you take license pictures in that is also a waste as well. And you have the large basement meeting room that could easily double as a conference room. And we're even providing free office space to the director of the LCEDF, which is a private nonprofit entity and not even a department of the county. Larger counties than ours put their county attorney in the basement, and you don't hear complaints. They don't set them up in brand-new, cost-share digs on the main street at substantial high cost to the taxpayer. Whether or not this county sees fit to refer this matter to the state attorney general's office for the disposition it deserves under the law, I would like to see the county attorney in this courthouse. Hire her a secretary if she wants one. Keep her private business separate from her public business, and please do this now. Six months ago, had you terminated the monthly contract, had you reported the matter to the state attorney general's office, some of you could claim that you were never knowingly aware these contract makings were possibly illegal, illegally made under state law. I would have believed you. But after seeing your behavior these past six months, I can only conclude that you've been party to this all along, and you simply don't care whether or not KSA 754304 is being violated or not. You don't seem to think the law applies. I believe there is substantiated concern that the county attorney broke this law. Whether she has or not, she deserves to have this matter cleared up by the proper investigational authority post haste. Please, report the suspected unlawful conduct on the part of the county attorney to the state attorney general's office. I expect you to fulfill your sworn oaths and follow the Kansas County Commissioners Association Code of Ethical Conduct rules for county commissioners, which you may be familiar with. Principle number one, which includes, "A commissioner has an obligation to report suspected illegal misconduct by another elected official to the proper investigative authorities." All of you know the state attorney general's office is the proper investigational authority for matters of public integrity on the part of elected officials. Since October, I've been shocked and appalled to hear other Board of County Commissioners offer justifications for continuing to pay these contracts. I recall that these excuses included that the contract making saved the county money and that similar conduct may be occurring in other part-time county attorney-run offices. I will respectfully remind the Board of County Commissioners that the paid office expenses in the county attorney's budget have nearly tripled since these conflicted contract makings began. I don't see any savings. Whether or not any of you think this arrangement saves the county money, I do not believe it is legal to use the public good doctrine to justify breaking a state law if it's being violated. And I won't even offer a rebuttal on the other defense offered, that other part-time county attorneys may be doing the same thing, because I pray, I pray that claim isn't true for the sake of our state and the rule of law in other Kansas counties. For the sakes of your offices, for the sake of our county, and for the sake of our state and its laws, please, report the suspected unlawful conduct to the state attorney general's office post haste, so it receives the proper disposition under state law it deserves. I still hold out hope that some exculpatory information or explanation from the state attorney general's office can be provided that will clear this cloud from the county attorney's office and some of you. To conclude, I believe all of you, including the county attorney, are full of good intentions for this county. I don't believe there was ever intent to simply pocket money at taxpayer expense. But I do believe the length of time you've served in these elected positions may have corrupted your point of view of this law and may have corrupted your attitude when it comes to setting a high standard of public integrity under the law and avoiding conflicts like this. It is my opinion that I have personally witnessed some of you not doing the diligence and exercising the prudence your sworn oaths require you to do when you claim to serve all of us. Time is of the essence. Please perform your sworn oaths and stop violating the very first principle of the Kansas County Commissioners Ethical Conduct rules by blocking motions to refer this to the state attorney general's office. Please stop making excuses. I, for one, am very worried about the legal status of our county attorney. I hope the attorney general finds no law was broken, but if he does, this law has been violated, the county attorney has to be held to the same standard of law that any one of us as citizens would be, or the rule of law is lost in Lincoln County. The county attorney should not enjoy special privilege above the laws of the state. And if time permits, I would like to read a list of recitations as it applies to KSA 754304 in this matter. And if not, perhaps Commissioner Flew will use her time to read them. I will not read the background section, as I believe that is just a rehash of what is already well-known, but the synopsis and the recitation makes citations of the statute in question, and I believe substantiates that unlawful conduct may have occurred. I also request that when you refer this matter to the state attorney general, you include this letter, from which I have read, and the accompanying synopsis, background, recitations, along with a stack of evidence that I put on your table. Either way, I will be sending a copy of this to the state attorney general myself, so if you choose to omit any information, the AG may be aware of it. Thank you. Have I used up all my time?
You're going to reel your time down?
Sure.
Okay.
Want me to?
Well, do I have any? I didn't, I didn't notice.
She yielded your, her time to you.
Oh, all right, thank you. Here's the synopsis. This is this is essentially what I recommend you refer to the state attorney general. And I also respect if the county wants to hire a non-conflicted attorney to go over this information. I'm just providing this as a non-attorney, as a citizen who's invested a lot of time researching this law and the information. Synopsis: It is alleged that beginning in 2013, Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney and principal member of O'Hare Law LLC, has made and or participated in the making of conflicted, no-bid, monthly orally-made service contracts between the O'Hare Law LLC, a firm Jennifer O'Hare has a substantial interest in, as defined in KSA 754301 Section A in Lincoln County, through her official Board of County Commissioners-provided county attorney budget, in violation of KSA 754304 Sections A and B. It is also alleged that Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney, continues to make and/or participate in conflicted, no-bid, monthly oral service contracts between O'Hare Law LLC, a firm Jennifer O'Hare has a substantial interest in, as defined in KSA 75-4301 Section A in Lincoln County, through her official Board of County Commissioners-provided county attorney budget, in violation of KSA 754304 Sections A and B. The penalty for violating KSA 754304 is a Class B misdemeanor and/or removal from office upon conviction. I mentioned I skipped the background. With regards to KSA 754304, I am making the following recitations and ask that you report my letter, the synopsis, background, and these recitations to the state attorney general's office to be investigated. Either the attorney general will make an opinion and clear this cloud from the Lincoln County Attorney's office, or I pray he will act within his authority and enforce the statute equally across the entire state of Kansas. Since this commission has refused to act, refused to seek a legal opinion, refused to report the matter to the proper investigative authority, I've prepared to the best of my ability as a non-attorney, and I believe substantiated from the records obtained through the cora, this list of recitations, and is truthful, as I believe. Whereas pursuant to KSA 754304 Section A, no local government officer or employee shall in the capacity of such an officer or employee make or participate in the making of a contract with any person or business by which the officer or employee is employed or in whose business the officer or employee has a substantial interest. Whereas Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney, allegedly participated in the making of orally made service contracts and then approved the use of public monies from the official county attorney budget to pay O'Hare Law LLC billing claims submitted to the county each month for payment from December 2013 through the present. These billing claims include charges for the performance of office and secretarial labor services, which meets the definition of a compensatory contract as defined per KSA 754301A Section G. Whereas O'Hare Law LLC was formed and listed with the Kansas Secretary of State on December 6th, 2012, listing Jennifer O'Hare as having more than a 5% LLC member interest. Whereas annual reports filed with the Secretary of State's office list Jennifer O'Hare as a greater-than-5% member of this LLC through the present. Whereas this substantial interest in O'Hare Law LLC was present prior to Jennifer O'Hare participating and acting in the making of the professional service contract in 2013 and has remained a substantial interest through the present. Whereas as principal and presumed sole attorney in O'Hare Law LLC, Jennifer O'Hare also has met one or more of the other substantial interest definitions defined in 754301A in addition to her greater-than-5% membership interest in the LLC. Whereas Jennifer O'Hare, county attorney, approved O'Hare Law LLC $3,812.08 monthly service contract billings to the county from December 2013 through April of 2016 through these service contract makings. These contracts were paid from Jennifer O'Hare's county attorney office budget in addition to and separate from her county attorney's salary. Whereas in May 2016, Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney, as evidenced in a May 31st, 2016 county commission meeting official minutes, allegedly made and participated in the making of an $800 increase in the original monthly service contract price of the monthly professional services contract. O'Hare Law LLC then billed the county for $4,612.08 retroactively for the month of May, with an invoice dated on May 25th, 2016, well before the meeting where the county attorney publicly sought the consent and approval of the Board of County Commissioners for her use of her existing office budget for the requested increase. Whereas Jennifer O'Hare, county attorney, approved O'Hare Law LLC $4,612.08 monthly service contract billings to the county from May of 2016 through December 2016 through these contract makings. These contracts were also paid from Jennifer O'Hare's county attorney office budget in addition to and separate from her county attorney's salary. And whereas since January 2017, Jennifer O'Hare, county attorney, has continued to approve O'Hare Law LLC $4,612.08 monthly service contract billings to the county through these service contract makings. These contracts have been paid from Jennifer O'Hare's county attorney office budget in addition to and separate from her county attorney's salary. Whereas Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney, participated in the making of other contracts for goods and services which conferred benefits to the O'Hare Law LLC law firm, which included co-locating the county attorney's office inside the O'Hare Law LLC law firm newly leased offices and seeking cost-sharing agreements for other equipment, goods, and services needed by both the newly formed O'Hare Law LLC law firm and the county attorney. Whereas pursuant to KSA 75-4304 Section B, no person or business shall enter into any contract or any local government officer or employee acting in that capacity as a signatory or to or to or have participant in the making of the contract and is employed by or has a substantial interest in that person or business. Whereas Jennifer O'Hare, principal member of the O'Hare Law LLC, allegedly hired and directed and managed O'Hare Law LLC employees to provide services for the Lincoln County attorney and then approved and made monthly service contract billing claims by redating an identical invoice and presented these contract billings for payment each month, utilizing the county attorney Board of County Commission-approved budget authority of her elected office. Whereas pursuant to KSA 754304 Section C, a local governmental officer or employee does not make or participate in the making of a contract if the officer or employee abstains from any action in regard to the contract. Whereas county commission meeting minutes also evidence that Jennifer O'Hare did not abstain and indeed actively participated in the making of the contracts by using her elected office authority to negotiate an increase to the county attorney budget approved by the Board of County Commissioners and then used her elected office authority to direct that budget to pay O'Hare Law LLC, a firm in which she has a substantial interest as defined by KSA 754301A. Whereas no written contract defining the terms of the monthly billing arrangement between the O'Hare Law LLC firm and the county or county attorney has been found with any signatories, it is alleged the contract was either destroyed or orally made. The Lincoln County clerk stated she believed these were orally made contracts. Whereas the May 13th, 2013 county commission official meeting minutes report for the county attorney. County Attorney Jennifer O'Hare discussed future plans for herself and her law firm and discussed how it will affect the county attorney's office and costs associated. After discussion, the board approved payment in the amount of $400 per month towards rent expenses and further cost adjustments will be considered at a later date. Whereas the July 8th, 2013 county commission official meeting minutes report for the county attorney. County Attorney Jennifer O'Hare discussed future plans for herself and her law firm Whereas the July 8, 2013 County Commission official minutes report for the county attorney. County Attorney Jennifer O'Hare discussed county legal matters. O'Hare provided information on a meeting held Monday, July 15, in Cloud County concerning court and courthouse security measures in regards to new concealed carry regulations and the exemption requested by the counties. And this is the part I want to emphasize. O'Hare related that she is completing the setup of her new office location and related that she has personally paid for a used phone system and line installation, inquiring if the county would pay for the programming and setup as three of the incoming phone lines will be utilized by the county attorney's office. The board approved the payment of installation services. Whereas the October 14, 2013 County Commission official meeting minutes report for the county attorney. County Attorney Jennifer O'Hare requested that the board consider approving moving the county attorney's office to her new law firm prior to January 1, as there is sufficient funds available in the county attorney's budget to pay the additional costs for office expenses negotiated earlier this year while working on the 2014 budget. The board related that they would be in favor of a December 1 move contingent upon sufficient runs, funds remaining within the budget. I also want to interject, none of you are liable under the statute. I don't believe any of you have a substantial interest in O'Hare Law. She is an elected official. She has sole authority over her budget and how she spends it. The Board of County Commission only approves the budget. That's why I believe these concerns are serious because she's, as I believe the evidence shows, has been acting and making. The coming to the Board of County Commission meetings, I believe, was for show or political purposes. I don't know. Whereas the May 31, 2016 County Commission official meeting minutes report for the county attorney. County Attorney Jennifer O'Hare requested that the contract to O'Hare Law LLC be increased to pay for an additional employee that was hired, not to be hired, was hired to help with the increased county attorney workload. After discussion, Terry Finch moved to increase the contract to O'Hare Law LLC by $800 per month through December 2016, seconded by Gerald Hill. Motion carried. Again, I want to reiterate, I think this public appearance was moot. The hire was made, the intent, the plan, the actions were already made by the county attorney. Apparently, the budget already existed. It was just for show that she came before the commission. It is alleged also that O'Hare Law LLC presented an invoice for the May contract dated six days prior to this public request, and it already had the exact $800 increase and retroactively billed the higher amount you supposedly approved for the entire month of May. Whereas in KSA 754304 Section D, this section shall not apply to the following if: contracts led after competitive bidding has been advertised by published notice and for contracts for property or services for which the price or rate is fixed by law. Whereas the Lincoln Sentinel, the official newspaper of record, appears to show no published notices for the bidding of a professional services contract for the county attorney both in 2013, prior to the making of the original contract that began in December 2013, nor when the contract was raised in May of 2016, nor when it became month-to-month in January of 2017. And whereas the price or rate for the providing of secretarial and office support services for a county attorney is not fixed by law. Therefore, it is alleged that Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney, did repeatedly act and did participate in the making of orally-made professional service contracts and contracts for other goods and services using the budget of the county attorney's office between Lincoln County and the law firm O'Hare Law LLC in which she had a substantial interest without conducting competitive bidding and without using a price or rate fixed by law. The only written contracts found were the monthly billing statements, which appear to have been made and approved by Jennifer O'Hare, acting county attorney, but also principal LLC member of O'Hare Law LLC. Whereas violating the prohibition set for KSA 754304A and KSA 754304B upon conviction may be removed from office, KSA 754304 Section E, and subject to a Class B misdemeanor for each offense, KSA 754306A. Whereas pursuant to KSA 754305, any local government officer or employee who has not filed a disclosure of substantial interests shall, before acting upon any matter which will affect any business in which the officer or employee has a substantial interest, file a written report of the nature of the interest with the county election officer of the county in which it is located, all or of the largest geographical part of the officer or employee's governmental subdivision. Whereas a Kansas Open Records Act for all Jennifer O'Hare substantial interest disclosures with the county election officer in Lincoln County produced substantial interest filings which did not include O'Hare Law LLC as a substantial interest until May of 2016. Whereas pursuant to KSA 754304B, any local government officer or employee does not pass or act upon any matter if the officer or employee abstains from any action in regard to the matter. Whereas County Commission minutes show that Jennifer O'Hare did not abstain from any action in regard to the matter of co-locating the county attorney's office inside her law firm and did not abstain seeking higher.
Excuse me, David. You're getting kind of long here. You've already used your time and her time, or you're about done?
Yeah, I just have three paragraphs. I appreciate that, thank you. Therefore, it is alleged that Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney, did not file a disclosure of substantial interest in the O'Hare Law LLC law firm before participating and acting in numerous matters which affected her business, O'Hare Law LLC, in which Jennifer O'Hare had a substantial interest in violation of KSA 754305 Section A. Whereas in KSA 754306A, violation of KSA 754304 or 754305 and amendments thereto, or failure to make any disclosure of substantial interests required by KSA 754302A as a Class B misdemeanor. There may be some question whether Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney, abstained from participating or making in any way in these contract makings by seeking the Board of County Commissioners' approval and vote for directing funds in a previously negotiated budgets. Kansas Attorney General Opinion 88144 may provide some guidance regarding her participation in actions and whether her appearances before the Board of County Commissioners were proper and/or constituting abstaining as the law defines by publicly seeking the approval and consent of the Board of County Commissions for her intentions and actions. And that's the recitation. That's my presentation. These are the synopsis, background, recitations, and this is all the records that we've obtained that I think substantiate some of our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we've got a couple of tox abatements here we need to do. We have Conrad and Jana Wareman. We have some cropland that was converted to pasture with a net change of $375.06. And we have another one for Conrad and Jana Wareman, again, cropland that was converted to pasture with a net change of $391.10. I move to approve.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have this resolution lifting the burn ban.
I'll move to adopt resolution 1815 to remove the burn ban.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Don, we're gonna hold these bills over to next week. We're gonna kind of wait here, so.
Oh, we gotta get. We gotta pay. It's the end of the month next month. We gotta look at them.
Straightforward, pretty, I don't know what this is. I don't want clarification on that.
I wondered about that, too. What that, I don't even know what that company does. Does it say?
This is that heating unit that I told you about last week, I think. They were in the hallway that went in.
We have street plumbing and heating for $884.00 and $255.00 relating to an access panel for cabinet fan coil and a control board for the furnace. Lincoln Building Supply, $111.30 and another $6.32 outlet cover, switch plates, a lag screw, plastic anchor, sheet metal screw.
This other one has just got part numbers on it, and I don't know what the part numbers are.
And what is that company? ARJO or something? I don't know what that means. Is that all the correspondence?
Yes, as far as I know it is.
Okay.
There should be that ad, "Live Lincoln County."
Oh, yeah, that "Live Lincoln County" ad. Did you look at it?
I did look at it. Did he want that today?
I think he needed it by the second, didn't he say?
So can we look?
I think I'll look at it.
Let's look at that next week.
Okay, let me look at it.
I move to notify the requesters list of county commission meetings of the public town hall on April 27th so that all commissioners may attend without violating coma.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
I would like everyone to know that the requester list for the Lincoln County Commission consists of two entities. One is, oh, we have two additionals that I didn't know. Now, Mr. and Mrs. Gursman have requested notification of meetings. Prior to that, Katie Black was the only individual, and the other quester of notification was the Lincoln Sentinel. So in order for your commission to hold a meeting, the only requirements are, and you can look at this on the Attorney General's website, if we want to hold a meeting at any time in addition to or extending from our regularly scheduled meetings that pretty much everyone is aware of, we must notify our requesters, which in this case, they just rejected to notify two people, the Sentinel, the Lincoln paper, and Ms. Katie Black who's here today. And the only other requirement, which I volunteer myself, is that if we were to go into executive session during an open meeting, we would have to make minutes of the motion and the vote on going into the executive session. And Don has prepared a wonderful questionnaire for us so that we can choose the reasons why we may go into executive session. So for those of you wondering, if we were to attend any meeting, even if the three of us were to attend a school board meeting, if we knew that ahead of time, we just notify the requesters list, which now is four notifications, one goes to the same household. And if we decided to go into executive session, which we necessarily or obviously wouldn't, I should say, that would be, those are the only two stipulations and requirements by the Attorney General.
It is not our meeting.
It doesn't matter. If we are going to appear in a public meeting and have any discussion over any public issue, those are the only two things we have to do.
No, you're not accurately portraying that.
Could you explain?
I will give you an example, yes I will. About three or four weeks ago, there was a equal fair housing meeting conference in Salona. The Sleen County, or the Sleen City Commission were sending members there. They did a public notification, as you're saying, because there was going to be no city-related business discussed at that meeting. If you look in the booklet that you're talking about, there's a specific paragraph in there that states that a majority cannot be present if business is going to be discussed involving that entity. I would assume that everything that's going to be discussed at that open, that public forum is going to involve county business, correct?
The only two requirements.
Unless, if you don't, if you, my understanding of the law, not an attorney, but is what that is saying, and you're correct, if you three show up at a birthday party and any of you talk about any county business, or you talk to me, and then I talk to you and I relate something, one way is allowed, by the way, but then the minute I say, "Oh, Mr. Wallace, Mr. Finch said he would do such and so," that is absolutely a coma violation unless, and this is the key thing, unless prior to this happening, you contacted Katie Black, the Lincoln Sentinel, and now Mr. and Mrs. Gursman, and said, "We may be at this birthday party discussing county business, and you're invited." If you do that, your authority as county commissioners, you could call meetings, you could call a meeting right now at 2:00 in the morning, you could have a band or do whatever you want.
Your press, we could call a meeting. It's not our meeting, David.
No, no, it has to be.
It's your meeting.
As long as the pub, as long, no, as long as the public, no.
Here's off of the Attorney General's website. When does a meeting subject to the coma take place? A meeting of the body subject to coma has three elements. A, an interactive discussion. Note, discussion alone triggers the coma. It is not necessary that the action or vote be taken. And while I was attending the meeting, I talked to Cheryl Whalen, and she told me it didn't even have to occur with the commissioners. As long as discussion was occurring about county government, it is an open meeting if, B, by and between at least the majority of the body, so if there's at least two members there.
Correct.
And C, on matters relating to the functions of that body. Now, my understanding with the invitation and the comments that was made in it, it's going to be on matters relating to Lincoln County. So all three of those elements say it's an open meeting in which minutes need to be recorded, and I think that's what you're saying is, "Oh, I don't have to."
No, you don't.
Now, the only thing that is required to be is action, but you guys choose to have more than action in your minutes.
No, please, please read the Attorney General's website. It says, "The only recorded minutes." And to be honest, Don, I'm very thankful for you. You have been recording every motion, every discussion, who said what. I mean, it is so thorough. It's wonderful. I couldn't be more thankful that you've done a super, super job. Because if you look, we are subject to the state rules of coma, and it only says that you have to record minutes to go into executive session. If we wanted, people, we could be doing all of these meetings and not writing down the things, because we haven't had an executive session in months. You wouldn't be reading anything in the paper except that we had a meeting. I mean, that is how loosely the state oversees what you're doing as a public body. So what you're saying, Don, is the town hall qualifies us as having a public meeting. And what do we have to do in order to be in compliance?
You have to record minutes, and you have to.
You have to record executive session motions.
No.
Pull up the Attorney General, pull up the Attorney General website.
And you have to make your notifications.
All right, John, we'll be out next Monday.
What?